Good afternoon, calling this Friday, February 11th, 2 p.m. Agenda of the House Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee to Order. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here and testifying on these very important issues. Just want to go over a few things and welcome you if this is your first time to the House Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee. Just a few guidelines to help our proceedings go smoothly today. One, if you can make sure to change your name in Zoom to what your testimony, the name reflected in your testimony. That helps us virtually spotlight you as well as find you and facilitate and expedite today's proceedings. Also, if you can keep yourself muted until you are called upon. Once you're called upon by me for testimony, then please unmute yourself and feel free to go ahead, as well as turn on your camera at that moment. Also, I would remind people that we do have a two-minute time limit here. So at about two minutes, I'll ask everyone to start summarizing. As you can tell from our long agenda, there's many important issues that we want to try to keep moving and get out of the committee before we reach our second lateral deadline next week, which is fast approaching. So you'll notice all of CPC's agendas from here on out are rather long, and we want to make sure to do justice to these issues. So if you can help us by abiding by our time limits, that would also be helpful. And also, and lastly, just want to ask for everyone's help again in perpetuating aloha through our committee and in testimony irrespective of where we may all fall on these issues. I just ask everyone to continue to perpetuate what I think makes Hawaii and its discourse special, especially vis a vis what we see going on in the mainland. So I just ask for mutual respect and aloha to be shown to everyone throughout today's proceedings. With that, we'll happily take up our first agenda item HB 1516. This is relating to regulation. This prohibits as an unfair and deceptive practice the advertisement of a good or service in the absence of licenses or permits for the good or service to the extent that the licenses or permits are required by applicable state and county laws. We have our first testifier in HB 1516, Tim Lyons with comments, subcontractors association of Hawaii. Tim, I think you have to unmute yourself.
I think you're correct. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tim Lyons with the subcontractors association of Hawaii. We just want to comment very quickly that we think that subsection A2 is in conflict with other existing statutes that prohibit aiding and abetting a person without a license. And we're taking that into consideration, or at least we hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We also have Kiko McClellan offering support from the American Hotel and Lodging Association.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you, folks, so much for your consideration of this most important measure. The American Hotel and Lodging Association and our partners at the Hawaii Hotel Alliance are hyper-aware of the strained relationship between the visitor industry and our kamaii and the communities that the men and women within these associations represent and work with and for every day. And we note that one of the driving causes behind that is the explosion of illegal short-term rentals throughout our islands that exists in a continued and unregulated fashion. And we credit the numerous introducers of this measure who sought a creative way of working within the letter of the law to crack down on advertisers of illegal activities. That would include short-term rentals. For those reasons and as the reasons you've seen stated in AHLA and the Hawaii Hotel Alliance's testimony in support of this measure, we encourage your conversation on this and your support for this bill. Happy to answer any questions if you or the committee have. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Kiko. Members, please note that we also have other supportive testimony proffered on time and late. Is there anyone else that I haven't called whose proper testimony on HB 1516 who would also like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers on HB 1516, members of the legislature and the committee, any questions? Representative Ha, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lyons. Thank you for being here and for testifying. You know, clearly, I think that we all know what this bill is geared towards, but the language in which you referred to could potentially be an unintended consequence with respect to the construction industry. Could you just please clarify exactly when you talk about this particular section A2 and how it could potentially be a problem for the construction industry?
Yes, Representative, I'd be happy to, and thank you for the question. The contractors' license law specifically forbids someone to act under the purview of somebody else's license. So you must be licensed in order to act. And by the way, I might add, I don't think it's just construction. That's what we testified on, but there are many professions and occupations licensed at DCCA that in their licensing statutes prohibit the use of your license through somebody else. And so to that extent, I think in most cases, or at least in the contractors' licensing case, it is a charge of aiding and abetting an unlicensed person that will go against the person who holds the license. So I think that it would be a direct conflict to what this bill particularly offers.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB 1516? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB 1960. This is relating to nonprofit organizations, and this clarifies that unrelated trade or business activities from nonprofits shall be exempt from the general excise tax imposition of the general excise tax. On HB 1960, we have our first testifier, Judith Clark, in support from the YU Services Network.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network. A statewide coalition of youth-serving organizations. Hawaii's nonprofits provide critically needed services to meet the health, housing, family strengthening, and educational needs of children, youth, and families. In order to do that, nonprofits must raise funds to carry out their missions and programs. Conducting fundraising events is one of the ways that nonprofits generate those critically needed operating funds. While the IRS recognizes that such income is not a regularly carried-out business and does not impose tax on income generated from these events, nonprofits are required to pay state G E T on this income. The G E T paid on the fundraising events takes away funds that would have been spent on the nonprofit's missions and services. If the bill is passed, the G E T savings would increase funds for services that help our most vulnerable community members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Judith. We also have Lisa Maruyama in support from the Hawaii Alliance of Nonprofit Organizations.
Hi, yes, I'm here, Chair Johansson. Again, Lisa Maruyama Hano. I just have a few things that I'd like to highlight from my testimony, and that is that currently federal law actually exempts this tax on fundraising revenues. So this modification to state law would conform with federal law, making it a lot easier on an accounting basis for nonprofits to calculate this. This also, this change would also make this conform with how donations are treated. Donations to charitable nonprofits are also now tax-exempt, so this conforms with that treatment. So it's just not clear why fundraiser revenue is taxed, but donation revenue is not taxed. And then finally, just, you know, nonprofits in this way are being taxed twice because when they procure goods or services to arrange events, they are being taxed, you know, on the sales tax or general excise tax, but then also being taxed again on this revenue that they earn. And so all, you know, all by way of saying that a lot of this is being taken away from the very intent of a fundraiser, which is to diversify revenue, increase revenue for nonprofits, allow them to be financially independent. And so we ask for these types of provisions to free up those activities on our part. So we are in strong support. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this bill.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We also have J.C. Mikulunek from Queen's Health System in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. J.C. Mikulunek on behalf of Queen's Health Systems, and will stand on a written testimony in support for many of the reasons that have already been expressed by my colleagues. Thank you.
I'm sorry for butchering your last name, J.C. One of these days, I'll get it right. Let's see, on HB 1960, do we have Tom Yamachika from the Hawaii Tax Foundation? Sorry, we do not. The Hawaii Tax Foundation members offered late testimony with comments. Members, please note, we also have various other comments and significant supportive testimony from many individuals and organizations who have indicated that they wouldn't be present virtually to testify. With that, I'd like to ask if there's anyone else in the virtual testimony room who has proffered testimony on HB 1960 that I did not call in who would like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, then we'll go to questions. Members, any questions on HB 1960? Okay, seeing no questions, then on HB 1960, we'll move on to our next agenda item HB 2177 relating to tax administration. This makes a whole lot of different tax changes with respects to electronic filing as well as changing the fine structure for lack of compliance, et cetera, in this sort of tax on the bill. On HB 2177, we have our first testifier in HB 1960, Tim Lyons with comments, subcontractors association of Hawaii. Tim, I think you have to unmute yourself.
I think you're correct. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tim Lyons with the subcontractors association of Hawaii. We just want to comment very quickly that we think that subsection A2 is in conflict with other existing statutes that prohibit aiding and abetting a person without a license. And we're taking that into consideration, or at least we hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We also have Kiko McClellan offering support from the American Hotel and Lodging Association.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you, folks, so much for your consideration of this most important measure. The American Hotel and Lodging Association and our partners at the Hawaii Hotel Alliance are hyper-aware of the strained relationship between the visitor industry and our kamaii and the communities that the men and women within these associations represent and work with and for every day. And we note that one of the driving causes behind that is the explosion of illegal short-term rentals throughout our islands that exist in a continued and unregulated fashion. And we credit the numerous introducers of this measure who sought a creative way of working within the letter of the law to crack down on advertisers of illegal activities. That would include short-term rentals. For those reasons and as the reasons you've seen stated in AHLA and the Hawaii Hotel Alliance's testimony in support of this measure, we encourage your conversation on this and your support for this bill. Happy to answer any questions if you or the committee have. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Kiko. Members, please note that we also have other supportive testimony proffered on time and late. Is there anyone else that I haven't called whose proper testimony on HB 1516 who would also like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers on HB 1516, members of the legislature and the committee, any questions? Representative Ha, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lyons. Thank you for being here and for testifying. You know, clearly, I think that we all know what this bill is geared towards, but the language in which you referred to could potentially be an unintended consequence with respect to the construction industry. Could you just please clarify exactly when you talk about this particular section A2 and how it could potentially be a problem for the construction industry?
Yes, Representative, I'd be happy to, and thank you for the question. The contractors' license law specifically forbids someone to act under the purview of somebody else's license. So you must be licensed in order to act. And by the way, I might add, I don't think it's just construction. That's what we testified on, but there are many professions and occupations licensed at DCCA that in their licensing statutes prohibit the use of your license through somebody else. And so to that extent, I think in most cases, or at least in the contractors' licensing case, it is a charge of aiding and abetting an unlicensed person that will go against the person who holds the license. So I think that it would be a direct conflict to what this bill particularly offers.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB 1516? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB 1960. This is relating to nonprofit organizations, and this clarifies that unrelated trade or business activities from nonprofits shall be exempt from the general excise tax imposition of the general excise tax. On HB 1960, we have our first testifier, Judith Clark, in support from the YU Services Network.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network. A statewide coalition of youth-serving organizations. Hawaii's nonprofits provide critically needed services to meet the health, housing, family strengthening, and educational needs of children, youth, and families. In order to do that, nonprofits must raise funds to carry out their missions and programs. Conducting fundraising events is one of the ways that nonprofits generate those critically needed operating funds. While the IRS recognizes that such income is not a regularly carried-out business and does not impose tax on income generated from these events, nonprofits are required to pay state G E T on this income. The G E T paid on the fundraising events takes away funds that would have been spent on the nonprofit's missions and services. If the bill is passed, the G E T savings would increase funds for services that help our most vulnerable community members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Judith. We also have Lisa Maruyama in support from the Hawaii Alliance of Nonprofit Organizations.
Hi, yes, I'm here, Chair Johansson. Again, Lisa Maruyama Hano. I just have a few things that I'd like to highlight from my testimony, and that is that currently federal law actually exempts this tax on fundraising revenues. So this modification to state law would conform with federal law, making it a lot easier on an accounting basis for nonprofits to calculate this. This also, this change would also make this conform with how donations are treated. Donations to nonprofit, charitable nonprofits are also now tax-exempt. So this conforms with that treatment. So it's, we're just not clear why fundraiser revenue is taxed, but donation revenue is not taxed. And then finally, just, you know, nonprofits in this way are being taxed twice because when they procure goods or services to arrange events, they are being taxed, you know, on the sales tax or general excise tax, but then also being taxed again on this revenue that they earn. And so all, you know, all by way of saying that a lot of this is being taken away from the very intent of a fundraiser, which is to diversify revenue, increase revenue for nonprofits, allow them to be financially independent. And so we ask for these types of provisions to free up those activities on our part. So we are in strong support. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this bill.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We also have J.C. Mikulunek from Queen's Health System in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. J.C. Mikulunek on behalf of Queen's Health Systems, and will stand on a written testimony in support for many of the reasons that have already been expressed by my colleagues. Thank you.
I'm sorry for butchering your last name, J.C. One of these days, I'll get it right. Let's see, on HB 1960, do we have Tom Yamachika from the Hawaii Tax Foundation? Sorry, we do not. The Hawaii Tax Foundation members offered late testimony with comments. Members, please note, we also have various other comments and significant supportive testimony from many individuals and organizations who have indicated that they wouldn't be present virtually to testify. With that, I'd like to ask if there's anyone else in the virtual testimony room who has proffered testimony on HB 1960 that I did not call in who would like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, then we'll go to questions. Members, any questions on HB 1960? Okay, seeing no questions, then on HB 1960, we'll move on to our next agenda item HB 2177 relating to tax administration. This makes a whole lot of different tax changes with respects to electronic filing as well as changing the fine structure for lack of compliance, et cetera, in this sort of tax on the bill. On HB 2177, we have our first testifier, Director Isaac Troy, in support.
Yes, Chair, this is Jonathan White on behalf of the Director of Tax. This is one of our administration bills. We're in support of this bill, making, like you said, several changes to tax administration that we think are important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that's all the testifiers.
I don't think it's just construction. That's that's what we testified on. But there are many professions and occupations licensed at DCCA that in their licensing statutes prohibit the use of your license through somebody else. And and so to that extent, I think in most cases, or at least in the contractors license licensing case, it is a charge of aiding and abetting an unlicensed person that will go against the person who holds the license. So I think that it would be a direct conflict to what this bill particularly offers.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB fifteen sixteen? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB nineteen sixty. This is relating to nonprofit organizations, and this clarifies that unrelated trade or business activities from nonprofits shall be exempt from the general excise tax imposition of the general excise tax. On HB nineteen sixty, we have our first testifier Judith Clark in support from the YU Services Network.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network. A statewide coalition of youth-serving organizations. Hawaii's nonprofits provide critically needed services to meet the health, housing, family strengthening and educational needs of children, youth, and families. In order to do that, nonprofits must raise funds to carry out their missions and programs. Conducting fundraising events is one of the ways that nonprofits generate those critically needed operating funds. While the IRS recognizes that such income is not a regularly carried out business and does not impose tax on income generated from these events, nonprofits are required to pay state G E T on this income. The G E T paid on the fundraising events takes away funds that would have been spent on the nonprofits' missions and services. If the bill is passed, the G E T savings would increase funds for services that help our most vulnerable community members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Judith. We also have Lisa Maruyama in support from the Hawaii Alliance of Nonprofit Organizations.
Hi, yes, I'm here, Chair Johansson. Again, Lisa Maruyama Hano. I just have a few things that I'd like to highlight from my testimony. And that is that currently federal law actually exempts this tax on fundraising revenues. So this this modification to state law would conform with federal law, making it a lot easier in accounting on an accounting basis for nonprofits to to calculate this. This also, this change would also make this conform with how donations are treated. Donations to nonprofit charitable nonprofits are also now tax exempt. So this conforms with that treatment. So it's we're just not clear why fundraiser revenue is taxed, but donation revenue is not taxed. And then finally, just, you know, nonprofits in this way are being taxed twice because when they procure goods or services for to arrange events, they are being taxed, you know, on the sales sales tax or general excise tax, but then also being taxed again on this revenue that they earn. And so all, you know, all by way of saying that a lot of this is take being taken away from the very intent of a fundraiser, which is to diversify revenue, increase revenue for nonprofits, allow them to be financially independent. And and so we ask for these types of provisions to to free up those activities on our part. So we are in strong support. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this bill.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We also have J C Mika Lunik from Queens Health System in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. J C Mike Yonk on behalf of Queens Health Systems, and we'll stand on our written testimony and support for many of the reasons that have already been expressed by my colleagues. Thank you.
I'm sorry for butchering your last name, J C. One of these days, I'll get it right. Let's see, on HB nineteen sixty, do we have Tom Yamachika from the Hawaii Tax Foundation? Sorry, we do not. The Hawaii Tax Foundation members offered late testimony with comments. Members, please note, we also have various other comments and significant supportive testimony for many individuals and organizations who have indicated that they wouldn't be present virtually to testify. With that, I'd like to ask if there's anyone else in the virtual testimony room who has proffered testimony on HB nineteen sixty that I did not call in who would like to testify. Okay, seeing no further testifiers, then we'll go to questions. Members, any questions on HB nineteen sixty? Okay, seeing no questions, then on HB nineteen sixty, we'll move on to our next agenda item. HB twenty one seventy seven relating to tax administration. This makes a whole lot of different tax changes with respects to electronic filing as well as changing the fine structure for lack of compliance, etc., in this sort of tax on the best bill. On HB twenty one seventy seven, we have our first testifier, Director Isaac Troy, in support.
Yes, Chair, this is Jonathan White on behalf of the Director of Tax. This is one of our administration bills. We're in support of this bill, making, like you said, several changes to tax administration that we think are important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that's all the testifiers who are present virtually indicating that they would testify on this. We have opposition and comments also on this measure, members. Is there anyone else in the virtual testimony room who has submitted testimony on HB twenty one seventy seven who I have not called on and would like to testify? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB twenty one seventy seven? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB sixteen nineteen. This is relating to peer-to-peer car sharing insurance requirements, and it would establish peer-to-peer car sharing insurance requirements. HB sixteen nineteen, we have Commissioner Colin Hayashida with the Insurance Division offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, members of the committee. Thank you. I'm Colin Hayashida, Insurance Commissioner for the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments on the bill. Specifically, we are asking that we kindly request the committee to make the amendments that are listed in our written testimony to align coverage limits and protection to consumers that have similar business models. We appreciate the opportunity to testify, and we'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We also have Allison Uweoka with the Hawaii Insurers Council in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. Allison Uweoka for Hawaii Insurers Council. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. We do support this bill with some amendments, and we do not have any objections to the amendments proffered by the Insurance Commissioner. And we have a list in our testimony of how we feel about various amendments that came to us after the first hearing by Turo. So thank you. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. We also have Annie McCapagal from the American Property Casualty Insurance Association in support.
Aloha, Chair, Annie McCapagal on behalf of APCIA. At this time, we're simply going to stand on our written testimony in support of the bill. Also, in support of the commissioners commissioners amendments as well. And happy to be available for questions, should there be any, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tammy Bowie with Turo offering comments.
Aloha, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, members of the committee. Tammy Bowie on behalf of Turo. We have submitted written testimony with comments for your consideration on this measure. I did want to acknowledge that we appreciated the opportunity to recently meet with Ms. Uweoka and the Hawaii Insurers Council. We do see from the testimony that there are a majority of items where they are neutral, and we would be agreeable with the items noted three through ten. And we do intend to communicate further on items one and two. We had previously provided alternative language directly to HIC after our meeting, but I'll be sure that we follow up with this language for the committee's consideration. I did want to, Chair, highlight specific references to minimum insurance coverage, which you may hear in other testimony. It is important to clarify that Turo does not advertise, nor do we guarantee providing $750,000 of liability coverage for guests who are the shared car drivers. Turo does provide the state minimum coverage on all trips with the options for guests to purchase additional coverage. And while there have been comparisons made to higher coverage requirements in place for TNCs, our business model is completely different. TNC transactions like those of Uber and Lyft include a for hire driver and a paying passenger. And so increased insurance requirements are in place in those circumstances to be able to capture the unique realities of a paying passenger in the car. And in fact, I'd like to point out that the $1 million insurance requirement for TNCs is only in place when there is a passenger in the car. And so this is a circumstance that is never the case with peer-to-peer car sharing. Our peer-to-peer guests, who are the drivers themselves, are no more prone to accidents than rental car drivers or any Hawaii driver, for that matter. Rental car companies and individual vehicle drivers are not required to care cover carry coverage higher than state minimums. And so we maintain that peer-to-peer car sharing should not be held to a different standard, and that if minimums are increased in this bill, they should also apply to rental car companies. That concludes my comments, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much, Tammy. Next, we have Kiko McClellan with Get Around offering comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Get Around. It's important that we we look at peer-to-peer car sharing companies in the context that they are unique animals. We will stand mostly on our written testimony, but it it does beg the opportunity for us to think through where we are and where our Kamaiina communities are as we're relating again to each other and to opportunities that that we see in in today's modern economy. And in platforms like Get Around, there is a unique opportunity here for local families to support other local families who won't need to purchase an extra car because they can borrow their neighbors. Or for individuals who are commuting to work with a car that will sit idly for ten or twelve hours, that they could turn on and off that platform in a completely contactless way, in a way that is safe and in ways that allows these individuals to earn an income. Get Around is new to the Hawaii market space, and we're pleased to be representing them here. If you have any questions, we are happy to avail ourselves of you and the committee and and your members here. We appreciate this opportunity to call out the differences between peer-to-peer car sharing and other modes of consumer transportation. Thank you very much for your time and for your consideration of our comments.
Thank you very much, Kiko. Next, we have Solidad Roybal, also with Get Around.
Aloha, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify today on House Bill sixteen nineteen. Kiko just told a lot about our company. I am the Public Policy Manager for Get Around, and I have provided written testimony for the committee's consideration, and I am available also to answer any questions you might have. As he said, Get Around is a fully digital and contactless car sharing marketplace, and we are very new to Hawaii. We are excited to be operating there, and we hope that, like in other parts of the country where our service is available, that it will make lives better by creating new a new way to have a transportation option, to run errands, to spend time with family, and to get to places that are challenging or inaccessible through public transit. With Get Around, you know, we allow local owners to earn extra income by sharing their cars as opposed to leaving them idle 95% of the time. Get Around uses a patented technology, and it's totally contactless. It's convenient, it's safe, it provides affordable, safe cars for people who need them. And because it's contactless, it reduces the risk of the risk of sickness, of discrimination, and other issues that could arise from in-person exchange of keys. We applaud the intent of HB sixteen nineteen to recognize the importance of defining a common sense to define common sense insurance requirements for the industry. And we want to also ensure that your constituents can utilize this important mobility option. But to this end, we want to share concerns that we have on certain elements of the bill, and we hope to work together to resolve those issues. We look forward to continuing the discussions with you and your colleagues and finding the best solution for everybody. Mahalo for your consideration of my testimony.
Thank you very much, Solidad. We also have Mike Yosuo with the Hawaii Association for Justice in support.
Afternoon, Chair. Mike Yosuo on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. You have our written comments, and we'll just stand on those noting that our main concern with the bill is the insufficient amount of minimum coverage. We concur with the Insurance Commissioner's recommendation for minimum coverage amounts. Available for any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mike. Do we have the Department of Transportation here? Department of Transportation?
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. On behalf of the DOT, the DOT stands on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ. Members, please note, that's the extent of those individuals expressing their wish to testify virtually in today's hearing. We do also have supportive testimony and opposition proffered on this measure as well. Is there anyone else who has proffered testimony or who submitted testimony on HB sixteen nineteen who I didn't call in would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB sixteen nineteen? Representative Onishi.
Yes. I have a question for Get Around, either Kiko or Solidad. My question is, is Get Around a peer-to-peer for locals only, residents only?
Um, so I mean, I don't think it's legal to discriminate against anyone from using the service. We are very new to Hawaii. And the reality is, is in most other parts, in fact, almost all of the parts where we operate, what we have found is that the users who use our service tend to be predominantly people with driver's licenses from the states they operate in. And because we provide a service that allows for a time as little as one hour, we have found, you know, most in the most cases, 50% or less of our time is, you know, every place is different, but it's a large percentage of our users don't use the vehicles for more than 24 hours. So it isn't possible to say you can use our service and you can't. But what we can say is in other places, what we have found is our service tends to be used oftentimes by people who don't necessarily own their own car, maybe because they can't afford it or because they choose to not have it, or they live in a place that it doesn't make sense. But obviously, anyone can use the service, but in other places, it tends to be many people who are locals.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification. So it is open to visitors' use?
It's open to anyone who wants to use the service. But again, what we have seen, not necessarily in Hawaii, because we just got there, but in other places, it's very much a service used by locals.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative. Members, are there further questions on HB sixteen nineteen?
Mr. Chairman?
Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Uweoka from the Insurance Council.
Yes, Representative Har.
Good afternoon, Ms. Uwe. Good to be here. Okay, so I so obviously, this is an issue peer-to-peer. Our car sharing is new. It's a relatively new concept. We've gone through this with TNCs before. Obviously, I I find their argument somewhat compelling with respect to not, you know, why should they be held at the same standards as TNCs? Because it is a different method of operation. I mean, I actually found that the testimony would be somewhat compelling. But that said, from the Insurance Council's position, you are advocating for Turo's amendments, correct?
Uh, only some of them, Representative Har, with regard to the risk. We actually think that the risk in this situation is is much higher than that of a TNC because the TNC, the insurer is rated rating the driver. In this situation, there are maybe multiple drivers that the insurer does not know who they are or what their records are. So the risk is actually, in our opinion, higher.
Oh, I see. So that's why you guys are calling for the $1 million minimum minimum limit, then?
We're not opposing it. It wasn't originally our proposal. We think that some sort of insurance parameters are necessary, and you need to know who pays first and what is primary. But for that reason, what we're trying to do is protect the personal auto policy from this business venture. And so that if the program has higher coverage, then it protects the personal auto policy even more. And that's why we're not objecting to the higher limits. In terms of just analyzing the pure risk, we we think it's riskier.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Bowie, Tammy Bowie from Turo.
Yes, Representative.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. I actually found your argument quite compelling, but you just heard the comments. I mean, obviously, I don't know if you've read the testimony from the Insurance Commissioner from some of the TNC advocates. Again, so why how would you argue then that this having the higher limits or in place comparable to TNCs? Because this is somewhat of a riskier business because you have more people having to drive the cars. It's not just one insured. It's, you know, you're having multiple drivers utilizing the the peer-to-peer cars.
Thank you for the question, Representative. I think what I would say is what I I I explained in my testimony, Representative, which is that basically a driver, so the two models are completely different, I think, as you've already noted, right? In this case, when somebody is using a car on the platform, whether they go to a rental car counter or whether they go to you, Representative, as a host of the car that is sharing your car, that is somebody that is driving that car on the road, just like a Hawaii driver that would be on the road. So the the insurance minimums that are in place for what the driver, whether they are getting a car from a rental counter or a car from a host on a platform, we we maintain that that is the same. We are held to the same standard. And so what we are asking for is not to be singled out with the presumption that somehow, because I am a driver, whether I'm a local or somebody who is coming to Hawaii to drive a car on the road, that somehow the risk is higher. There can be two people when they rent a car from a rental company as well. There could be two people in the a car when they are driving a car from somebody that they are getting from the platform. And so what we maintain is that the standard there is the minimum state, the state minimums. And so we're asking to be to be at that same at that same limit. And we are saying that if the state, though, requires increasing that because of that risk, that that takes that is taken into consideration.
Okay, so to be clear, though, so you put the the maximum amount of liability that you currently provide under Turo, what is that then for for drivers?
We so we have two. So we have the host, and then we also have the driver. For the driver, what we ensure is that 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 the minimum, the minimum is always in place.
Okay. And what about for the host?
The host, the host has the opportunity to be able to have up to the $750,000 in coverage for liability if that is if if that is needed.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, are there any additional questions? Representative Onishi, please go ahead.
Yes. Yeah. I guess this this question is for Turo. So then what exactly do you require in terms of insurance insurance coverage for the owners of the cars on your platform?
Thank you for that question. What we what we do on the platform is we have a coverage of up to $750,000 that we offer to all hosts. These are the owners of the car. That is that is in place at all times and and available for the host that lists their car on the platform.
So that is your insurance coverage?
That is coverage that is, I apologize, I don't I don't mean to topple for you. That is coverage that is offered by Travelers Insurance.
So who pays that travel insurance?
Travelers Insurance is the the insurance company that we work with in the event that the host that there is liability coverage that is needed for that host.
Okay, so if the state of Hawaii or motor vehicle requires less than the $750,000 coverage, your coverage is in addition to that?
The there there are two transactions. So there is the host, and then there is the guest side. I let me.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not worried about the guest side at this point. I'm worried about your hosts and their and their vehicle. What is the required coverage by you in order for that person to be on your platform?
The host is required to have the the their insurance. We what we're off, what I'm speaking about for the $750,000 is that in the case that their insurance does not cover or additional coverage is needed in the event that they are held liable, that we provide up to $750,000. or additional coverage is needed in the event that they are held liable, that we provide up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I'm sorry, Representative, if I'm not answering your question completely. I would be happy to also follow up specifically with you, um, with my general counsel and others who may have much more in-depth knowledge of these insurance matters.
Okay, great, Chair.
Thank you. Um, members, any further questions? Okay, Tammy, I have one for you as a follow-up because, uh, I, I think, I think we've sort of answered Representative Onishi's question, but, but I think it can be more concretely answered. If anybody is a host with your platform, does it off, I mean, uh, I know you said available and offered, but is that seven hundred and fifty thousand coverage applicable irrespective of, sometimes I'm not sure if you're describing whether there has to be an election process by the host or if it's just, if the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar coverage is automatically attached to every host and therefore available if someone, a user gets in an accident in that host's car.
Thank you, Representative. Um, so what we, what we actually know on our website, and I'll read it here so that it's, so it's perfectly clear. All of our protection plans, uh, are for hosts include coverage under third-party auto liability insurance policy. That's issued through, uh, Travelers, uh, the Travelers Excess and Surplus Lines Company. Um, what this policy does is that ensures that hosts, uh, against legal exposure for claims and bodily injury, property damage to a third party or someone else that may occur during a guest trip, um, uh, be covered up to a combined single limit of seven hundred and fifty thousand, except in some states and at some airports that require additional coverage. Um, the policy also includes the personal injury protection, uh, and uninsured or uninsured motorists only in a few states where this is already required by law. So I don't know still if Representative, I've answered your, your question.
Sort of, maybe if I can just, um, ask. So it automatically attaches?
That's right.
To every Turo transaction.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions on HB 1619? Okay, uh, seeing no further questions on HB 1619, then we'll move on to HB 1688 relating to registration of vehicles. This injects you driver, uh, you-drive motor vehicles to the same motor vehicle registration fees and motor vehicle fees. It also authorizes the counties to use certain, uh, registration fees to mitigate and address the impacts of tourism-related traffic congestion. On HB eight, uh, sixteen eighty-eight, uh, we have our first testifier indicating that they would be present. Miho Koito with Enterprise Holdings in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Miho Koito, on behalf of Enterprise Holdings, um, testifying in support of this measure. Um, this measure does two things. It, uh, makes the, uh, registration fee, the county registration fee for vehicles the same for, uh, you-drive vehicles as well as all other vehicles. And also authorizes the counties to use, uh, that fee to, um, address impacts of tourism congestion. Um, we've really appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with some of the counties on this measure and are in support and ask you to please pass it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miho Ko. Um, do we have the Hawaii State Association of Counties?
Uh, here.
Oh, please, go ahead, John.
Well, John Okudara for the Hawaii State Association of Counties. We also support this measure, but would like to also ask that you consider an amendment. Um, this fee was enacted a number of years ago to, as a beautification, um, program for abandoned and derelict vehicles. Um, the addition of, the, um, taking away the, um, exemption of you-drive vehicles for this registration fee would help in mitigating tourism-related traffic congestion. But during the interim, we also found that in oh-seven, the, there's, it was a ten-dollar limit imposed on this beautification fee for the counties for the disposal of abandoned and derelict vehicles. But we found since oh-seven, when it was implemented, that in the case of several counties with a larger population, the ten-dollar limit works. But in, um, counties with fewer vehicles that are registered, um, the ten-dollar fee is not sufficient because the problems for derelict and abandoned vehicles are different in terms of storage and recycling facilities and administrative costs for these disposal, for the abandoned and, um, derelict vehicles. So our request would be to pass this bill with an amendment to take the ten-dollar cap off the fee. Uh, without amend, we can strongly, um, support this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, John. Um, do we have Tom Yamachiko with the Tax Foundation of Hawaii? No, we still do not have Tom. Uh, the Tax Foundation members, uh, did provide, um, comments on this measure. I believe that's the extent of testifiers indicating that they would be present virtually to testify. Members, please note that on HB 1688, we also have received, uh, supportive testimony from, uh, various agencies and organizations as well as individuals. Uh, is there anyone else in our virtual hearing room who has provided testimony on HB 1688 would like to testify that I haven't called up? Okay, seeing no further testifiers on HB 1688, members, any questions? Representative Onishi.
Yes, um, for John Okudara.
Yes.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Here. Um, I have a question. If we remove the cap, how much of the registration fee would be used by the counties for this purpose?
You know, the reason why we're looking at removing the cap is, um, that the administrators of the program in each of the counties would know and are able to determine their cost. Because say, a, a lot of the complaint came from the county of Kauai where they, and, uh, they experienced drastic increases in cost primarily because they don't have the type of storage facilities or recycling programs for the disabled and abandoned vehicles. Um, during the summer, when we had a number of meetings on these vehicle registration bills, Honolulu in particular said for them, they thought the ten-dollar was enough because they had sufficient facilities and programs to handle those abandoned vehicles. So, um, our proposal in removing the ten-dollar cap would be to let the counties determine based on what they find in their counties, what the cost would be for, um, the disposal of abandoned and derelict vehicles. Um, if, if they may not raise it much beyond the ten dollars, some counties, if Honolulu says it's efficient, may not raise it at all. So, uh, our proposal is because you leave it up to the counties who are experiencing the shortfall of revenues to determine based on what they can do within their counties for abandoned and derelict vehicles. The, uh, I'm not addressing any of the traffic-related congestion or tourism.
So the county's position is that this problem of abandoned and derelict vehicles should be completely paid for by the registration fee?
Um, no, I mean, you've got a whole bunch of fees going in there. This just removes, it's because the counties, Kauai in particular is, um, experiencing a great shortfall in the amount of revenues available to them for abandoned and derelict vehicles. They're talking about hundreds of vehicles every year that they are encountering and are not able to remove in a timely fashion or have facilities that are unable to accommodate them. So, um, I would say they would be the ones to ask in terms of, um, their shortfall and why the ten-dollar is insufficient for that particular county. Because Kauai is the one that's been, um, most vocal about it. Um, but abandoned and derelict vehicles, we're finding that an increased problem is also, um, a lot of violators who will regularly abandon vehicles and just dump them on the side of the road on private property or elsewhere. And, um, that cost then becomes something that the counties have to bear or the people that administer a program for those vehicles.
Yeah, so shouldn't this be a shared cost between the counties and the state?
Uh, that's up to you. Um, you could, you know, I don't know how you would word it in there because.
Well, right now, it's a shared cost, right? Because.
Well, right now, they, they said they can set it up to ten dollars.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions on HB 1688?
Chair, I, I have something. I don't know if it's a question or, because I share the same concerns that, um, Representative Onishi has, especially since it's only for Kauai. I'm just, it doesn't have a cap and I'm afraid of what they might raise it to, which would be a really big burden on some people on Kauai. So I just, um, you know, I don't know if you can take that back to Kauai or not. I, that's just my concern. I mean, I just feel like there should be a cap. It should not be just an unlimited amount. You have any comment to that?
You know, I mean, um, it's come up. I don't know what, we would arbitrarily set the number. Um, Kauai, if you call them, they, I'm finding that they have very accurate numbers in terms of their annual costs and how those costs have grown, the number of vehicles that they've had to remove have grown. Um, and I don't know if you would be able to sit with them and determine what an appropriate cap would be. But again, that's just Kauai.
I know.
Oahu.
Okay, no, I know. I, I'm just, like I said, on Kauai, maybe they have to look at their policies because I understand that if you have a vehicle and you just throw it on the side of the road, they'll come and pick it up. But there are owners that need to be held responsible for disposal of the, some of those vehicles. And it, it, to me, it's a policy call. I just don't see why all of the people who pay for registration should have to pay for that. So just, that's just my concern, but.
Well, number one, so I, I mean, to respond to that, that's why this past interim, there's a, a package of bills that came out of a number of meetings, um, that Representative Ilagon called. And, um, various motor vehicle registration administrators and, um, others from the counties came together and put together the package. HSEC introduced a bill for, to remove the ten-dollar cap, which wasn't part of his original package because it wasn't something that was broad-based for, uh, all the counties. So, um, what we felt was that we take off the cap, it really left it to the counties to determine what their amount would be for their particular, um, um, population. Um, so I, in terms of the other enforcement, um, recommendations for derelict and abandoned vehicles, I would say, look at the package of bills that, uh, Representative Ilagon proposed.
John, I don't mean to interrupt, but, uh, the committee has passed those bills.
Well, okay.
HB fourteen, twelve, and fourteen thirteen.
Right, right. Those are done earlier. Yeah, those are done earlier.
Thank you, Chair. I'm done.
Thank you, Representative Morikawa. Members, any other questions on HB 1688? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to, uh, our next measure, HB nineteen fifty-three. This is relating to concessions. This provides DOT with more flexibility and discretion to address substantial hardship. Oh, uh, I think somebody's unmuted themselves, but, um, to address substantial hardship situations that impact airport concession contracts. Uh, we have our first testifier, um, James Stone from the Airport Concessionaires Committee in support.
Uh, thank you, Chair Johansson and Vice Chair Kitagawa and honorable committee members. Uh, the committee represents the majority of concessions that operate at Hawaii's public airports. Uh, we stand in strong support of this bill with amendments. Uh, this bill simply gives the DOT the flexibility and discretion to grant relief in times of significant hardships. Uh, this bill is not a threat because the DOT, whenever a request for relief can be made, can simply say no. So there's no harm or threat posed by this bill at all. Um, we tried to pass this bill last year and unfortunately, uh, the DOT said not to worry. But we were concerned about antiquated laws and contract provisions that would create problems. And we turned out to be correct. Unfairness occurred where some concessions got some relief, some got less, and some got none at all. So passing this bill will help to, uh, correct the problem and it will give DOT the flexibility and discretion, uh, like other airports. It will clarify what rights a concession has, only to ask, it'll be codified in the law, what rights you have to ask. Again, no threat to the DOT. It can say no to any requests. It also clarifies the flexibility of the DOT to say yes if it wants to. So this bill is no threat and we appreciate the DOT in distributing some of the congressional funds, uh, provided, um, by Congress, but, but we need, uh, help in giving the DOT the discretion like other airports with no threat. Uh, the DOT says there's relief under section one oh-two dash ten. That is not correct. Uh, the DOT says the discretion under the current sudden events provision in contract, that is not correct. And as a result, unfairness occurred, as I mentioned. So we urge you to pass this bill, uh, with amendments, uh, you know, that we have proposed. I'd be happy to, uh, talk about them. But again, this bill just provides wide discretion and no threats at all. The DOT can always say no to any request for relief, just like other airports can do. Now, the airlines oppose this bill because they feel it's a threat to the airlines. This bill is not a threat to the airlines. If any request for relief is going to add to the burden of the airlines, the DOT can say no. So it's, uh, it's really, you know, kind of mirrors in smoke. We want to give the DOT the surgical tools that if there is an emergency, you have all the tools at your disposal to consider granting relief. And if you don't want to, you don't have to. Please support this bill. It corrects unfairness. It's a fair bill. It's not a threat. It causes no harm. I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, members may have, or you, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, James. Next, we have Myung Oh with the Airline Committee of Hawaii in opposition.
Afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, Myung Oh testifying on behalf of the Airlines Committee of Hawaii. I'll stand on our testimony in opposition, but would like to highlight that the Department of Transportation airports already have the discretion. Um, I think they've shown that since the pandemic, uh, up to the tune of about a hundred and twenty million dollars since. Um, again, we believe this measure to be unnecessary and ask that the committee hold this measure. Uh, thanks for your time and allow me to testify.
Thank you very much, Myung. We also have late testimony from the Department of Transportation offering comments.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ross Igashi here again. Uh, the Department of Transportation Airports Division, uh, provides comments, um, in his testimony. So we stand on our comments. Thank you. Any questions? Um, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much, Ross. Um, do we have a Wendell Brooks Jr. also with the Airport Concessionaires Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm present.
Hi, please, go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you and, and, uh, to the, uh, members of the, uh, committee for allowing me to, uh, testify. Uh, I'm a real estate and business consultant, uh, the commercial real estate area. And, uh, it's a, uh, emphasis on, uh, retail, uh, which, uh, relates to, uh, my testimony. Uh, I strongly support, uh, bill nineteen fifty-three, uh, as expressed in the written testimony that we submitted. I hope it went through. There were some questions as to whether the, uh, document arrived, but. the, uh, document arrived, but let me just highlight a few points. Uh, they, I think the major point is that in times of, uh, uh, crisis such as COVID that is critical for landlords such as the Hawaii Department of Transportation uh, to have the discretion and flexibility to help concessionaires. And, uh, we believe that, uh, present laws, uh, and contract provisions are, uh, uh, do not match up with that, uh, uh, with that need. And that is in part evidenced, uh, by the fact that, uh, what hap- what we have in Hawaii does not li- line up with the, uh, uh, what happens on other, uh, continental U.S. uh, airports. Uh, I'm particularly concerned about this, uh, uh, change in the original draft. That reduces the, uh, time limit that, uh, a concessionaire might be granted, might be granted, uh, uh, for an extension. Uh, originally, we, it was proposed to be twenty-five years. It's been reduced in the latest version of the, uh, bill that I've seen, fif- fifteen years. And, uh, uh, we believe that twenty-five years is, is more appropriate. Um, the, uh, uh, new, uh, draft also, uh, inserts a provision uh, for the, uh, airport concessionaire, concessionaires to recall employees who are laid off during the, due to the act of God, uh, an act of God. Uh, this provision is, is, uh, vague, uh, and also could serve to limit uh, a concessionaire's staffing flexibility while trying to reestablish their business and, and, uh, recover losses that they've incurred. Um, the, uh, uh, we, we believe that, uh, it's important to have this broader uh, flexibility because the, uh, uh, financial assistance that has been available in the last couple of years may not be available in the, in the future or may not be adequate to make much of a difference in the future. Uh, and as noted, uh, bill nineteen fifty-three does not create any risk for Hawaii Department of Transportation. It is not a mandate to agree to a request. Requests must be merit-based. Uh, the, uh, uh, we, we believe that it's important for this bill, uh, with the corrections noted, amendments noted, uh, be passed and, uh, ask for your support. Be happy to, try to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony.
Thank you very much, Wendell. And just to confirm, we do have your testimony. It, it made it in just fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, that's the extent of testimony proffered on HB nineteen fifty-three. Uh, is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB nineteen fifty-three? Okay, um, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB nineteen fifty-three?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Deputy Director Higashi, please. Department of Transportation airports. Good afternoon, Deputy Director. Thank you for being here. Okay, so I'm looking in your written testimony. And it clearly, it, it refers to the concession agreements that you have in place with concessionaires. And it says it defines sudden event as the occurrence of an event that is sudden, extraordinary, and generates relatively immediate several, severe adverse impacts for the state of Hawaii, which is also beyond the control of the airport concessionaires such as COVID nineteen. So obviously, I think COVID nineteen was the genesis for this, uh, for this bill. That said, um, you know, you've heard the testimony from those who are in support of this bill. And they're basically saying that this is not a mandate. Um, you know, i- in any event, Department of Transportation could refuse the request, so it's not a mandate. Yet you say in your written testimony that this bill creates broad relief trigger mechanisms which may not be directly related to substantial hardship situations and may create undue risk and obligation to the Department of Transportation airports. Can you please elaborate on that?
Yeah, basically, the, the language, although given, you know, discretion, uh, the language should be tightened only because of the fact that, um, it says gross receipts is dependent on gross receipts. If there's a drop in gross receipts versus, uh, employment. Um, that's one issue. And then the other issue is that, um, again, it doesn't state that the trigger is based on a sudden event. It's just if you, if your business um, loses, say, fifteen percent within a two, two-month period, then um, it would, the trigger would, you know, it, it's not based on, again, you know.
Actual event itself.
So it could be based on a concession. Not being able to sell their goods, maybe due to their workforce or the, the inventory. So for me, it's to tighten up the language because if it does become law and you, and somebody sees it, then they're going to say, well, here's the example in the law. So how come you can't, you know, use your discretion for that? So.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so one of the, um, uh, the, the contentions by the Airport Concessionaires Committee was that, you know, this bill would allow DOT to correct unfairness where some concessions got an extension due to COVID. Some got less and some got nothing. Can you, so are you saying in that situation, it was because they couldn't actually prove, um, these concessionaires were not able to prove that a sudden, that the sudden event of COVID did in fact reduce their gross receipts? Is that why they got nothing? I, I, again, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what's going on here, what, what the reality is of the situation at the airports with the concessionaires.
I understand your question. So the example, the fact is that on April first, twenty twenty, that was the start that we considered, uh, uh, the beginning of COVID nineteen.
Okay.
Pandemic. So for example, if your concession ended, say, I'm just using an example on June first, we only gave them a two-month extension because their contract would have ended on June first anyway. So.
Anyway, okay.
Why would you give them two years? So I think the issue is that they wanted two years across the board. Um, so.
You mean in terms of contract extension?
Correct. So we, it was, we gave everybody, most, um, concessions that had more than two years remaining on their lease for the concession agreement, we gave them two years. But if you had anything less than that, that period of disruption is the amount of period that we allowed.
Okay, I see. Um, thank you, Deputy Director Higashi. I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. S- uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Stone?
Uh, yes, Representative.
Good afternoon, Mr. Stone. Nice to see you. Thank you for being here and for your testimony. So you've heard the test, you've heard the testimony of Deputy Director Higashi. And, you know, again, I, short of having actually looking at the concessionaires, uh, agreements with the Department of Transportation, um, you know, I think there's some merit with respect to substantial or, uh, sudden event and being able to prove that the sudden event was the reason for the reduction in gross receipts. Um, how do you respond to that? Because, you know, your testimony seems to seem like it's, it seems like it's a blanket, um, content, contention that simply because of COVID, everybody should get the extension. Is that the argument that you're making on behalf of the concessionaires?
No, I mean, the argument we're making is, you know, who knows what a sudden event may or may not be. And whatever the ask may be, the DOT can say no. If they feel that is not an appropriate sudden event or, or, you know, for whatever reason, you know, they can ask. The purpose of the bill is to give them broad flexibility like other airports. And if there's an emergency, the other airports don't say, oh, here's a list of ten things. And only if you're on the list of ten things, you know, can you ask. Other airports say, if you're having hardship and you can explain your hardship, then you have a right to come and ask for relief, but we have the right to say no. And so what we're trying to do is, like I said earlier, it's like surgical tools. You don't know what the emergency may be to save the patient or to help the patient. So we're giving them broad discretion to use any and all of the surgical tools they may want to use or they may choose not to use. They have the right to say no. They want the legislature to give them a list. Oh, uh, make our job easier. Even if it's on, on the list, then we have to look at it. But that's not how other airports operate. They say if you have hardship, you can come and ask. You know, and, you know, even if it is a sudden event, we can still say no. And that's what this bill does. It does provide broad flexibility. Now, he talked about grocery seats. The reason why we talked about grocery seats is because that's sales, that's revenues. Now, if we come in and we ask for grocery seats and you say, mm, we don't like grocery seats, you know, we want to use implements or whatever. They can say that, you know. They can say no to that if they don't like grocery seats. We think grocery seats are relevant because that measures sales. Just because there's an airplane doesn't mean it's full, you know? And, and that's why we suggest that. The other thing is unfairness did occur. You know, people are saying, oh, they already have the tools and flexibility. But as we pointed out, unfairness did occur. Some got two years, some got less, and some got none. And that was because of the AG's interpretation. And as we said earlier, it's the laws and the contract provisions that tie up what can and cannot be done. And it was the AG's interpretation that said, no, DOT, you can only give two, some less than two, and some none. Now, this bill says, no, you don't tie the hands of the DOT. They can listen. And if they think it's fair and they want to give it, they can say yes, they can say no. And if so, then that's their discretion. So, you know, AGs, you don't come up with what happened here. Other airports gave extensions right across the board. All of your businesses, no contract, revocable permit, temporary, all across the board. You guys are suffering grocery seats. You are losing money. We want to encourage you to stay and service the passengers. We're going to treat all of you fairly. And therefore, we're going to give all of you an extension. Because we want to encourage you to stay around and to service the passengers. That's what other airports did.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Stone, though, you did hear, uh, the contention from Deputy Director Higashi with respect to these contracts. He's basically said that anything that had less than two years left on the contract, it would not have been extended two years. Because what would be the reason for doing so when the contract was supposed to expire before the end of the two-year extension?
Okay, well, okay, what I'm trying to say is, first of all, when we talked to the deputy earlier, he wanted to give everybody two years. Because, you know, in fairness, you are all suffering grocery seats. Whether you have only one year or no contract or revocable permit, you are all suffering loss of grocery seats. We want you to remain in business to service the concessionaires. And in all fairness, we're going to give all of you two years across the board. What happened is the AG then stepped into the picture and said, no, I'm sorry, given the laws and given the contract provisions, even if you want to do it, I'm sorry, you can't do it. So if he wants to give another extension because of Delta and Omicron, guess what? The people are going to suffer.
Okay.
And that's why this bill is so important and it doesn't mandate the DOT to do anything.
Okay, thank you very much for your, uh, testimony, Mr. Stone. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other additional questions? Okay, seeing no further questions on HB nineteen fifty-three, then we will move on to our next agenda item, HB seventeen fifty-two relating to housing. This establishes a housing choice voucher landlord incentive program. In addition to requiring each PHA, uh, to adopt rules um, on the maximum of fifteen days after receipt of an owner's landlord inspection request as a reasonable timeframe within which to inspect the dwelling unit. For seventeen fifty-two, uh, do we have Scott Morrishi, the Governor's Coordinator on homelessness here?
Uh, good afternoon, Chair. Uh, Scott Morrishi, Governor's Coordinator on homelessness and Chair of the Hawaii Interests Council on Homelessness. I'll stand on my written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Uh, we also have Nikos Leverens with the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members. My name is Nikos Leverens on behalf of Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. Uh, we support this measure which establishes the housing choice voucher landlord incentive program. And we stand with other, uh, homelessness services providers in asking for it to be amended to include a, uh, non-discrimination clause, uh, for landlords, uh, against those uh, receiving housing choice vouchers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Nikos. Do we have, uh, Director Hakim Konzapi from the Hawaii Public Housing Authority?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. We stand on our testimony, uh, supporting the bill and also offering comments. Thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Director. Uh, do we have Betty Lou Larson with Hawaii Catholic Charities in support? No, okay. Ken Hiraki with the Hawaii Realtors in sport.
Hi, um, good afternoon. Um, I'll stand on our written testimony, uh, supporting the intent and I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. We also have Kristen Alice with Community Alliance Partners in support.
Aloha. Thank you for hearing my testimony. My name is Kristen Alice and I'm here on behalf of Community Alliance the Big Island Coalition and homelessness, as well as Hope Services Hawaii, uh, where Hawaii. After status and to that you enforce that prohibition through a private civil action um, in court with damages that are high enough to dissuade the practice. So I'm testifying right now from my, my home in Waikia Villas apartment complex located in Hilo. Um, and the reason that this is relevant is because a couple of years ago, a large real estate investment company called Tech Complex and began sys- systematic mass evictions of my neighbors. Um, so several of my neighbors received text messages telling them that they would be evicted so that the company could do some renovations, which largely have been cosmetic. Um, and raise the rent. In some cases, we have seniors, people with disabilities, families with children, disabled veterans who were told that their rent would increase fifty percent. Um, and that's just not sustainable for most of, most of the people that live in here. Um, the people who received section eight were also told that they would not be welcome to reapply for a unit. Because this company has chosen to discriminate. And unfortunately, this is becoming the norm. My colleagues who are housing impossible to find homes for the people that we serve give them an interview. And we're working with landlords and we support the landlord incentive portion of this. We're working to build more relationships with landlords and educate people about section eight, about how it's a good program where you are guaranteed part of that rent for the month. Um, but we need your help. You know, we can, we can do part of that side, but we need from you to pass a law that would fully outlaw discrimination against people based on their voucher status. Because, let's face it, this doesn't cut across society equally and this is kind of a legal loophole that allows people to discriminate based on race, based on, um, gender, based on ability, age, all the other things that have marginalized so many people in our society. So please pass this bill with those amendments. Fully outlaw discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristen. We also have Blanche Hattori, uh, providing testimony and support.
Hi, I'm Blanche Hattori.
Hi, welcome.
Yes, I also live in Waikia Villas and I am one of the persons that is under section eight. And the only reason I didn't go is because I have a private owner. And I think that was, they should have done that to a lot of people because they rented from them, they didn't renew their lease. Um, and a lot of them lived here long, longer than I have. I've been here nine years and I've seen people in and out. And this is the worst one that they've done to people. My rent went way up, um, like two hundred and twenty-five dollars within the pandemic area. And some of them can't afford it, some can, but they didn't want to hear them. They, they told them they had to leave. They had nowhere to go. Um, regarding the section eight, I feel that a lot of them in Hawaii don't understand the program. Maybe as landlords or owners or, you know, maybe they should be educated. Maybe as landlords or owners, you know, maybe they should be educated on it to learn that it's, it's actually guaranteed funds. They pay more of the, more than you do. And I really feel that they don't know, they don't understand it. Especially the newcomers, the tower, and the things that they have done to people. So I hope in this bill passed. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Blanche. Members, please note that we have testimony also proffered in sport or expressing comments on HB 1752. Is there anyone else who has proffered testimony on HB 1752 who I haven't called who would like to testify at this time?
Hi, this is Bob Wardlaw with Partners in Care.
Please go ahead, Bob. I'm not sure if we have, oh, we do have your testimony. I'm sorry, it's, it's under Laura Thielen, but please go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm testifying in her stead. Yeah, so we, we just wanted to also indicate that we're in support, and we also support the amendment on the prohibition of the income discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and sorry about that. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB 1752? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB 1752? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB 1575 relating to physician assistance. This would expand the scope of practice for physician assistance. And it requires a sampling of medical records rather than all medical records to be reviewed when physician assistants prescribe controlled substances. On HB 1575, we have our first testifier, Laura Reichart with the Hawaii State Center for Nursing offering comments. Not sure if you wanted to testify on this or not, Laura, but I know you're here, so.
Hi, good afternoon. And for some reason, my camera's being glitchy. I was planning on standing on my written testimony, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Scott Denny with the Hawaii Academy of Physician Assistance in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee.
We're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, Scott.
Can you hear me?
We can, but just barely, and I'm afraid that people won't really be able to hear, so I thought I would mention it.
Okay. See if I can just quickly change my Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee. My name is Scott Denny. I am a physician assistant, and I'm the immediate past president of the Hawaii Academy of Physician Assistance. And HOPA stands on our written testimony in support of HB 1575. PAs are trained as generalist medical providers, and our training is modeled on the medical school curriculum. It covers all the foundational aspects of medicine and various specialties. And our training is designed to ensure that PAs are well-versed in all the aspects of medicine and can be adaptable to whatever specialty our practicing collaborating physician is, is in. So we're kind of like any other advanced medical provider in, in this capability. And we know that PAs play a critical role in ensuring that healthcare needs are met throughout our communities, especially on our neighbor islands where that, that need is greatest. And nearly half of all PAs who are practicing in Hawaii today are caring for our neighbor island communities. And what, what HB 1575 does is it removes barriers that allow PAs to be able to practice at the top of our education and training. It's not necessarily really expanding our practice. It's just finally putting the words to match what we already do. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you all for allowing me to provide this testimony today.
Thank you very much, Scott. We also have Alani Kyogi with the Hawaii Medical Board in sport.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Alani Kyogi, Executive Officer with the Hawaii Medical Board. The board will stand on its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Alani. Next, we have J.C. Michael Lenick with Queens Health Systems in support.
Aloha, Chair. J.C. Michael Lenick on behalf of Queens Health Systems will stand on our testimony in strong support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Jonathan Ching with Kaiser Permanente in support.
Aloha, Chair. Jonathan Ching for Kaiser Permanente in support of this measure. We'll stand on our, you have our written testimony, we'll stand on it. I do have one of our physicians, Dr. Anthea Wong here, who would just like to highlight a couple of parts of our testimony if the Chair would indulge.
Please proceed.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing us to speak. HB 1575 really builds on the success of the 2019 legislation that has proven to be so effective and so helpful. This further relieves us as physician supervisors of the additional administrative burden and allows our PA colleagues to practice to the scope of their licensure. And to emphasize the big why, we are still in a critical physician shortage, particularly felt in the time of COVID surges, coupled with a backlog of care that, that comes from it. And it will only increase given the many early retirements and resignations. Hawaii is down 730-plus physicians across the state, especially in the neighbor islands, with Maui and Big Island lacking 40% of the physicians that they need. And what's surprising is that the PA practice is growing in our state and has increased by over 30% over the last few years, especially in the neighbor islands. PAs are one of the three, along with physicians and advanced practice nurses named in the Affordable Care Act, that are authorized to provide primary care. They play a critical role for us in our care delivery teams and help to ensure access to care for our patients throughout all the islands. And they're represented in almost every medical specialty within our medical group. We at KP collaborate with our physician extenders, both PAs and APRNs in a very similar manner. And our teams are so much the stronger for our partnership. PAs have just had to catch up in the legislation, which is why we, it's important that we support this bill. So in summary, we are strong supportive of HB 1575, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wong. That is the extent of our testifiers indicating that they would be present virtually to testify. Members, please note that there are numerous entities as well as individuals providing supportive testimony on this measure. Is there anyone else for HB 1575 who I didn't call that has provided testimony, would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB 1575? Vice Chair Kitagawa.
Thank you, Chair. I guess this question can be for Scott Denny. And you briefly talked about it, but I'm just wondering if you could explain sort of the educational pathways that physician assistants take compared to physicians? And then if you know, or if someone else knows, compared to APRNs? Because I noticed in the bill that, you know, APRNs and physicians are already listed, but we're adding in the PA part. So I'm just wondering if you can compare sort of the training that you have going, that you're getting, that you go through.
Absolutely. Happy to answer that question. So PAs are trained in what's called the medical model of medical training, whereas APRNs are trained under a nursing model of medicine, which tends to be a little bit more about education and prevention and treating health conditions. And what, what APRNs do is they become more specialized in their role. So they might become like a neonatal nurse practitioner or a pediatric nurse practitioner. Whereas because of the, the more generalized approach that physician assistants go through with their medical model that mirrors the physician training, is it allows us to be able to practice in any type of specialty and be able to move within those different specialties. We have to have a, at least a master's degree in order to be certified. APRNs are similar. Both professions have the ability to pursue doctorate programs, so a doctor of medical science or APRN doctorate. And both, both providers need to complete a certain amount of clinical hours before they go into their training. So physician assistants have to be able to perform 2,000 hours of clinical time in one capacity or another. Whereas nurse practitioners have to perform 1,000 hours before they go into their training. So by the time that PAs get into their 27-month-long training, we've already done the first two years of medical school based on the clinical hours that we've been performing in, in another profession. The, and then similarly, the, the nurse practitioners have to have, I believe they have a certain amount of continuing medical education hours that they have to achieve after they are once licensed in order to remain certified. PAs as well, we have to take a national certifying board, which is accredited by a national certifying committee. And we have to pass that test every 10 years, similar to our, our physician collaborators. And then we have to maintain a certain amount of continuing medical education hours in order to be able to maintain our license, to be able to practice. We hold our own DEA numbers, narcotic numbers, our own licenses, of course. And I will point out that for, for medical school, it's so competitive medical school that only 7% of applicants get into medical school and only 7% get into PA school. So it's, it's really equally competitive. So I hope that answers some of the questions.
Yes, that answers my question. Thanks so much, Scott.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any additional questions on HB 1575? Okay, seeing no further questions, then on HB 1575, we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB 1594 relating to the Center for Nursing. And this would require all nursing licensed applicants to respond to the center, the center's nurse, nursing workforce supply survey licensure renewal. And it also ups the fee from $40 to $60 per license by any of. On HB 1594, we have our first testifier. Leanne Tishima with the Board of Nursing offering comments.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Kitagawa. My name is Leanne Tishima. We'll stand on our written testimony. Offering comments.
Thank you, Leanne. Our next testifier on this measure is Laura Reinhart from the Hawaii State Center for Nursing.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony in strong support. If you have any questions about the testimony we provided, we are very happy to be of service.
Thank you, Laura. Next, we have J.C. Michael Lenick from Queens Health Systems. Sorry, I, what's your name?
Thanks, thanks, Vice Chair. We'll just stand on our written testimony in strong support and appreciate the Hawaii State Center on Nursing for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. Next, we have Jonathan Ching from Kaiser Permanente.
Aloha, Chair. Jonathan Ching for Kaiser Permanente will stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone else here who has submitted written testimony that would like to testify on HB 1594? Seeing none, committee members, any questions for the testifiers on this measure? No questions? Okay, going on to our next bill on the agenda, HB 1667. This bill is defines clinical laboratory director to include physicians, licensed clinical laboratory scientists and pharmacists, and amends the definition of practice of pharmacy. So first up on our agenda, we have Laura Reinhart from the Hawaii State Center for Nursing.
Good afternoon. Again, thank you very much for hearing my testimony. I just want to respectfully note that APRNs are currently being certified as CLIA waiver lab directors. And so I want to just note in my testimony, there is a recommendation to include the phrase licensed healthcare provider so that the people who are currently being authorized to do this work can continue to do so in the safe practice that OCA has established.
Thank you so much, Laura. Next, we have Mihoko Ito representing Walgreens.
Good morning, good, oh, sorry, good afternoon, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. Mihoko Ito on behalf of Walgreens. We are in strong support of this measure. And just wanted to note that CLIA wave tests are already being performed in pharmacies where pharmacists are already trained and licensed to perform these tests under the oversight of a physician. This bill is really merely to eliminate an administrative signature requirement by a laboratory director. This requirement does not exist in any other state in the way it does in Hawaii. And we respectfully ask that you move this measure. We did note a, a small technical amendment in our testimony and would appreciate consideration of that amendment. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mihoko. We also have Annie McCall from CVS Health in sport.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Annie McCall on behalf of CBS Health. We're just, we're going to stand on our written testimony in support and echo the sentiments of Walgreens. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Members, please note that we have numerous individual testimonies in support, one in opposition as well as comments provided. Is, on HB 16, oh, I'm sorry, we do have some further testifiers on HB 1667. Department of Health Resources Administration in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Committee. Keith Ridley from the Office of Healthcare Assurance on behalf of the Director of Health. The department is in opposition to this bill in consideration of the potential negative impacts on the quality of care services for consumers. We'll stand on the rest of our written testimony, and we're ready for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, I think that's the extent of individuals or agencies who are here who have expressed a desire to testify virtually today. But again, there is significant testimony on this measure as well. Is there anyone else who has proper testimony on HB 1667 who I have not called who would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB 1667? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB 1675 relating to medical care for minors. This permits minors to consent to medical care and services related to the diagnosis, treatment, or prevention of HIV. It specifies that a minor under certain circumstances shall not be liable for payment associated with the diagnosis, treatment, or prevention of HIV. And it also authorizes physician assistance in addition to physicians' APRNs to render such medical, medical care and services. On HB 1675, we have our first testifier, Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and committee members. I'm Dr. Glenn Wasserman, Chief of the Communical Disease and Public Health Nursing Division, and representing the Director of Health for this bill. The department stands on its testimony in, in support of HB 1675.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Michael Glowu Jr. of the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support.
Good, good afternoon. Happy Aloha Friday. Given the late hour, we will stand on our testimony in strong support. Just know that this bill will save lives. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Michael. Next, we have Heather Lusk with the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. Nikos Leverens from Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center testifying on behalf of our Executive Director. We strongly support this bill. It's one of our legislative priorities this year. And we ask that this bill be amended to specifically provide that confidentiality of services be maintained. Otherwise, we fear that although the law may have changed, no minors will actually, you know, avail themselves of, of the care provided if, if it's disclosed to their parents. Mahalo.
Thank you, Nikos. We also have Jonathan Ching with Kaiser Permanente in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Again, Jonathan Ching for Kaiser Permanente. We will stand on our written testimony in support of the bill and be available for questions.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Members, we've also received various other testimonies in sport or offering comments, as well as one individual in opposition. Is there anyone else who I haven't called wishing to testify in HB 1675 would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB 1675? Okay, seeing no questions on HB 1675, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB 1746 relating to health. This clarifies the group of professionals who are prohibited from knowingly referring or transferring patients to an uncertified, unlicensed care facility, repeals the landlord exclusion, and it requires Department of Health to prioritize complaints, complaint allegations based on severity for infractions of state licensed or state certified care facilities. On HB 1746, Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Keith Ridley on behalf of the Director of Health. We have, we are in support of this bill and will stand on our testimony and will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. I'm not sure if we have her today, but Miriam Tabanag with the Alliance of Professional Primary Caregivers. No, she's not, but provided testimony. Members, please note we have testimony, providing comments, support, and opposition on this measure. Both on time and late. Is there anyone else who I haven't called who is here to testify in HB 1746 who would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB 1746? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB 1746? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB 1758 relating to nurses. This allows for temporary permits to be issued to registered nurses and licensed practical nurses from a territory or foreign country that are seeking a state license by endorsement. On HB 1758, we have Laura Reichart with the Hawaii State Center for Nursing offering comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair. The Center for Nursing stands on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. We also have Dr. Amy Abayani with Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights in support.
Aloha. Thank you for hearing this bill. We stand in our testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abayani. We also have J C Michael Lunak, Queens Health Systems offering comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is John Garbaldi with the Queens Health Systems. We're going to stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, John. We also have Liza Ryan Gill with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights in support.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We stand on our written testimony in support, especially in the intention of this bill of increasing integration of highly skilled foreign-born persons into our state. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Liza. We also have Chelsea Fukunaga offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Chelsea Fukunaga, Executive Officer of the Hawaii State Board of Nursing. The board has stand on its written testimony, offering comments on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, please note that we have additional testimony proffered in support and also providing comments and one individual testifying in opposition or two individuals testifying in opposition rather. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB 1758 who would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB 1758? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, then we'll move on to our next agenda item. Moving away from healthcare onto coffee. HB 1517 relating to coffee. This requires coffee blend labels to disclose geographic and regional origins and percent by weight of the blended coffee. It prohibits using geographic origins of coffee and labeling or advertising for roasted or instant coffee that contains less than a certain percentage of the coffee by weight from the geographic region. Phased into a minimum of 51% after July 1, 2024. It prohibits the use of the term all Hawaiian in labeling or advertising for roasted or instant coffee not produced entirely from green coffee beans grown in Hawaii. And it appropriates monies for the pesticide subsidy program and for purchasing equipment to test coffee content or the percentage of coffee from green coffee beans grown in Hawaii. We have our first testifier, the Department of Agriculture.
Aloha Chair, Committee members, Morris Atta on behalf of Phyllis Shinbuku Kaiser. The department will stand on its testimony supporting the intent with the concern that it not affect our supplemental budget request. And we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Councilmember Dr. Holaika Goro Inaba from the Hawaii County Council in support.
Aloha. Good afternoon, committee members, committee chair, vice chair. My name is Holaika Inaba, and I represent North Kona on the Hawaii County Council. Here to testify in favor of this motion and wanted to point to Resolution 223 that the Hawaii County Council passed just a couple months ago. And the language in the resolution I introduced mirrors closely what Representative Lowen has introduced via this bill. And I want to mahalo Nicole for introducing it and and providing a kind of a step mechanism to allow for a transition rather than a hard line change to 51. The council here would like to see it at 100%, but we are in support unanimously for a 51% in the increase to 51%. So we ask for your support on this measure. Mahalali.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. We also have the Hawaii Coffee Company in opposition.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Gerard Bastians, representing the Hawaii Coffee Company. A little about our company, we're the largest roaster packer and distributor of Hawaii, of coffee in Hawaii. We sell everything from 100% Kona coffee to 10% Kona coffee, coffee blends from all different locations around Hawaii. And we represent ourselves in the Lion brand, the Royal Kona brand, and other coffee brands that you'll see at the grocery store or around the islands. And I'm speaking to you from our office and roasting facility here in Kalihie. We stand firmly against this bill. We feel like it is it is the wrong solution for consumers. This bill does a couple of things I'd like to highlight on top of my written testimony. Number one is it reduces consumer choice. Right now, consumers for years have been going to the grocery store buying Royal Kona blends from 10% to 100%. This bill basically outlaws those products, so those products are eliminated from the shelf. So consumers who enjoy the product from a taste standpoint will no longer be able to purchase it. And consumers that like to buy the Hawaiian blends from a value standpoint will no longer have the option of purchasing it, or if they do, the cost that they pay will go considerably up as the product blend increases from 20%, 30%, 40%, and 50%. And I think we've all seen a couple of things. One is how much food inflation is going up for everyone and what a squeeze it puts on families' budgets. And coffee is a commodity here in Hawaii. And an increase in the amount that people pay for their coffee is not is not something that's in the consumers' best interest across the island. Also, by outlawing this product, it will essentially reduce the amount of product that we produce here locally to support the local food supply, and a lot of that product will be shipped to the mainland. So what this does is accelerate, I think, a trend none of us feel good about, which is more and more of our food being produced on the mainland and shipped here. And that's another reason we stand against it. Further, we stand against it because it creates a lot of potential conflicts with trademarks that we own and other Hawaii coffee companies. Like our Royal Kona Coffee Company, it really restricts how we might be able to use our federal and international trademarks. And it creates some conflicts with the state law and federal trademark laws, which we think is an issue that needs to be or we'd ask would be dived into further. And possibly our greatest point of concern is enforcement. And from what we've heard in prior testimony, and I defer to you know, the esteemed experts at the Department of Agriculture, as we understand it, this bill is unenforceable in that the Department of Agriculture does not have equipment, systems, and policies set up to be able to actually test products and identify who's in violation and who isn't putting Hawaii or Kona coffee in the package, so it becomes entirely an honor system approach. So it takes companies like us who are honest and follow the rules and opens the door for nefarious organizations to come in and other suppliers from the mainland or elsewhere and sell product under the label of 51% Hawaiian coffee, 40% Hawaiian coffee, and literally have a very small percentage of wine coffee in there. As we understand it, testing only allows at some level to say, is there some Hawaiian coffee in the package? It doesn't give you percentages, so there'd be no way to to measure objectively whether someone actually put 20% in or 15% in, 10% in, and when it goes up to 51%, it's an impossible standard to enforce, and without the ability to enforce and test, it really creates a real disadvantage for for companies like ours. So on behalf of the consumer, the people out there buying the coffee on the shelf, trying to balance their budget and and enjoying the product, and for all the people that work here, and my intention not to cut jobs and not to move product to other suppliers on the mainland. I ask you to please table this bill until further consideration can be made. Thank you very much for your time. We very much appreciate it on behalf of myself and our organization and customers.
Thank you very much, Gerard. We also have Bruce Corker, Rancho Aloha, in support.
Thank you, Chair Johansson and members of the committee. My name is Bruce Corker. I am a coffee farmer in the North Kona District of the County of Hawaii, and I'm a member of the Board of the Kona Coffee Farmers Association. I strongly support HB 1517. And in addition to my written testimony, I would like to highlight three passages from Resolution 223-21, which as Councilman Inaba indicated was passed by the council last November. The resolution requests that the legislature adopt the 51% minimum for blends and identify the percentage of foreign grown coffee that is in a package of Hawaii coffee blend. I hope that the members of the committee have been able to read the county council's resolution in its entirety, but the three passages, the first of the three passages I would like to highlight is the fourth whereas clause of the resolution which cites the economic study published by San Francisco-based research economist Marvin Feldman which notes that the the resolution notes that this study finds that 10% blends have, and I quote from the resolution, caused Kona coffee farmers to lose $14.4 million in revenue per year as of 2010. An annual loss of more than $20,000 for the average Kona coffee farm. The average coffee farm in Kona is less than five acres. And so a five acre farm is losing $20,000 on average per year because of 10% blends. If you multiply $20,000 times the 30 years that the 10% blend law has been in effect, that's $600,000 lost to blends by the average farm. $600,000, which is removed from circulating in the economy of Hawaii County. $600,000 which goes to the mainland owners of the blend producers in the form of excess profits. Those profits are derived from the fact that 10% blends essentially are $5 or $6 per pound coffee, which is sold for 15, 20, or 20, $25 a pound. And they get that revenue only because the name Kona or the name Ka'ou or Maui or Kauai is on the label. The second passage from the resolution that I would like to highlight is the sixth whereas clause. Where the county found that in the past efforts to change the 10% blend law, and this is the quote, "have failed due to fierce opposition from coffee blender entities motivated by their desire to advance their own economic benefit at the expense of Hawaii's coffee industry and local farmers." The third passage is the second resolved clause where the the county council finds that enacting the reforms in this bill the enactment, quote, "is urgent and crucial to the farming community and to the economic recovery and growth of our island," close quote. I join with the Hawaii County Council in urging the adoption of HB 1517. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Next, we have Victor Lim with the Hawaii Restaurant Association in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Representative Kirigawa, and members of the committee. The Hawaii Restaurant Association, representing over 3,400 restaurants here, oppose HB 1517, HD1. And many of our restaurants in the state have been using the 10% corner blend for years and years, for actually for decades. And in my own situation, we've been doing it for over 50 years, selling 10% blend. We we recognize that Kona coffee commands a premium price and have a strong distinctive taste. Requiring a higher percentage will change the taste profile for many of our current restaurant customers at Joy. And consequently, will move the cost of the coffee significantly, which will really end up forcing us to move away from buying a locally blended, locally manufactured coffee product, which will result in actually moving the production facility to the mainland. We don't want to do that. And you know, our customers enjoy the coffee that we have, and we want to be able to keep the 10% blend available for our local clientele. So thank you very much for hearing our bill, and we hope you will hold this bill. Thank you very. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Victor. We also have Chris Manfredi with the Hawaii Coffee Association in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Chris Manfredi testifying in support of HB 1517. House Draft 1 for the Hawaii Coffee Association. Our association is a advocacy group for coffee industry. Our members are located throughout the state of Hawaii and at all levels of the supply chain. We stand on our written testimony, but I would like to highlight a few portions of it. Why farmers are experiencing price increases, labor is up, fertilizer is up, pest control is up, transportation is up. Yet on the store shelves, we're experiencing downward price pressure because our growers have to compete on the store shelves with products that are either counterfeit or comprised of 90% imported, generally lower quality coffee. Yet the Hawaiian origin names are still on those labels. We feel this unfair. Hawaii-produced coffee has to comply with Hawaii Administrative Rules Section 143, which is the minimum grade standards for Hawaii-grown coffee. Yet the coffee that's imported and used in these blends on a ratio of nine to one does not have to meet these grade standards. We've heard previous testifiers say that the taste is different, and yes, we agree with that. Taste is different because these are not Hawaii-grown products, yet they carry our valuable origin names. The second part of this bill speaks to invasive species and support for the pesticide subsidy program, which we also support. But one has to question the wisdom of importing large quantities of foreign grown coffee directly into our
into our growing regions. These imports of raw coffee beans are at least a vector for invasive species like coffeeberry borer and coffee leaf rust. And I want to speak to the enforcement side of this, came up in a previous hearing. There is available technology to trace where coffee comes from. If you read the Department of Ag's testimony, they highlight, uh, two portions of that, um, specifically for your transform infraspectroscopy and stable isotope analysis. The department's testimony is looking for an appropriation to be able to access this technology, either in the form of equipment purchases or contracting with existing labs that can test for both, uh, authenticity of a hundred percent product as well as blends. And if the argument is that it's not enforceable at a fifty-one percent rate, then how can that argument stand as it relates to a ten percent rate? And we want to erid- eritrate that, reiterate that the fifty-one percent is a compromise. Many of our members want a hundred percent in the bag, but the fifty-one percent is a fair compromise to be able to make use of our valuable origin names and allow growers to complete, compete fairly on the store shelves. That's our testimony. We're available to answer questions. Thank you for hearing this bill.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Members, please note that we have, uh, numerous testimonies in support and some opposition, uh, and comments on this measure. Is there anyone else who I haven't called to testify on HB fifteen seventeen who has proper testimony and would like to testify?
Good afternoon, Chair. This is Alexis Chapman from HFIA.
Sorry, Alexis, we do have your testimony. I just, um, have it under Lawrence, so I couldn't.
Oh, no problem. We, uh, stand on our testimony in opposition, and I'll be available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Alexis. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB fifteen seventeen? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB fifteen seventeen? Representative Onishi.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, for the Department of Health. Uh, Chair Shimobukuro, are you still?
Department of Agriculture.
I mean, sorry, Department of Ag.
Hi, uh, Morris.
Oh, hi, Morris.
For, for Felicia.
Sorry about that. Hey, uh, I wanted to ask, Morris, so, um, in regards to your testimony for, uh, the testing, um, so you said that there is currently no industry standard to determine the actual content or origin of the roasted and blended coffee. There is no commercially available equipment for the effective enforcement and to effectively prove any fraudulent occurrence. Yet you're asking for these, for equipment?
Are you asking if, um, we're asking for equipment?
No, I'm, I'm saying in your testimony.
Right.
Right? You're saying there's no industry standard to determine actual content or origin. And you're saying that there's no commercially, commercially available equipment to effectively enforce, to, for effective enforcement. Yet you're asking for equipment.
Why is that? Oh, sorry. Uh, th- thank you for the question. Let me, um, ask to bring forward our, um, the administrative for the, our Quality Assurance Division, Leo Baldo. He did, uh, a bunch of research about the state of the technology regarding this subject matter, and I think he might be better able to provide information, uh, regarding this issue.
Thank you very much for that, uh, question, uh, Representative Onishi. Uh, Leo Baldo, acting administrator of Quality Assurance Division. Um, so regarding your question about, uh, standards and equipment, uh, basically, uh, we don't have any commercially available equipment that we can use to do the testing. But there are cert- some labs now that are available that, uh, are interested in basically, uh, doing fingerprinting of Kona coffee and use that as a reference to make sure that we can determine the origin of coffee. So we're working with some companies now, but, uh, these are not really considered industry standard because these are emerging technology. So, uh, that's where we are at the moment.
Okay, so this implementation, uh, as far as Department of, uh, Agriculture's concern, uh, is not enforceable at this time.
That's a fair statement.
Okay. Uh, uh, back to Morris, I have a different question, if I might.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Morris.
Yes.
Has the department done a market survey or market study in regards to this impact of changing the requirement, uh, that the count, that the state already has in place in terms of, right now, the minimum standard is ten percent blend in order to have the origin name. So has the department done a market study to see what would be the effects to the, uh, cost of coffee and also to the, the impact to the farmers in changing these percentages of coffee blend?
Thank you for the question. Um, I am not certain, um, and I'm not sure, um, Chair, Chair Shimobukuro Geiser can answer that question, and she's been, um, on top of this subject for quite a while. But, um, to my knowledge, I don't believe the state has conducted studies. I know the different, um, advocates for the different positions have been doing a lot of their own research and, and gathering data and studies to support their, you know, their position. I'm not aware of any, um, department-sponsored, um, you know, review or study of, of, of the impacts.
So this has been an issue that has been around for quite a while, a number of years. Um, why hasn't the department done a market study to try to determine whether or not it makes sense for the state of Hawaii to change the requirements for blended, uh, Hawaii grown coffee or Hawaiian, uh, regional coffees?
I'm not sure I can, uh, I know how to answer that. Um, these are, you know, kind of basically positions taken by, you know, the, the coffee industry, and we've tried to facilitate, um, discussions, uh, within the coffee industry. I'm, I'm aware of that. I, I can't give you an answer about why we didn't separately or independently pursue a study to, 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 you know, uh, to understand it. Um, but we have been actively working, you know, within the industry to try to get the various viewpoints to, to some, come to some kind of compromise.
Well, there's obviously no compromise. So, I mean, you would think that, you know, the department should be taking a stand as to whether or not this is beneficial to coffee farmers and the state of Hawaii or not. So, I mean, I think it's imperative that a market study be done in order to get to the bottom of whether or not these proposals make sense or not. Because, um, as the testimony of, uh, Mr. Gerard, that, that Stinius says, it may affect small coffee growers, uh, in regards to whether or not they'll get better prices or not. I mean, it's, it's something that I think would concern the legislature as to whether or not this effort makes sense or not. So.
So, yeah, the department could definitely look at the, you know, possibly conducting studies and, and, um, we, we would probably need to work that into, uh, our budget to do something like that. Um, I, I totally agree with you. We, we need to understand the impacts in order to properly assess it, the problem and possibly propose a solution. Um, but, um, and Leo can correct me if I'm, if I'm in error, but I am not aware that such an effort has been taken yet.
Okay. Oh, Chair.
Please, go ahead.
I'm fine. Thank you.
So, thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB fifteen seventeen? Okay, seeing no further questions.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Representative Har.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Um, if I may, Deputy Director Atta, good afternoon.
Excellent.
Thank you for being here for testifying. Okay, so I just want to follow up on some of the comments made by Representative Onishi. So I want to be clear. Your written testimony clearly states the department lacks the capability to regulate the authenticity of roasted and blended Hawaiian-grown coffee, uh, labeling, correct?
Yes, at, at this, at this time with the state of technology.
Okay. And then again, Leo, just confirmed that there is no industry standard to determine the actual content of origin, or origin of the roasted and blended coffee.
I, I believe that's a correct statement of Leo's testimony.
Okay. Did you hear the testimony of Chris Manfredi, though? He disagreed with that statement. He said that, how could they, you know, how, how is that possible if you guys can regulate the ten percent?
Um, can I ask Leo to kind of explain?
Absolutely.
How that's done?
Absolutely.
Oh, uh, thank, thank you for that question, Representative Har. Um, so basically, uh, the, uh, Department is, uh, regulating the ten percent by sending inspector to the, uh, roasting company and observe their roasting process and make sure that their records would reflect the ten percent Kona, if it's coming from Kona under blend. But we used to do that before, we used to do that before the RIF, but, uh, after that, we're not able to do it anymore. And we respond to complaints, and if there's complaints, we're going to look at their two-year record to make sure that they're in compliance with the ten percent, uh, requirement for labeling.
Okay, so at this point, it sounds like a lack of the number of inspectors. You don't really have the personnel to go out and do the inspections, correct?
Uh, can I?
Physical observation, yes.
Leo, can I, can I interject for just a second? Uh, so from, from what I understand, uh, the way we've been confirming it previously has been through a records check, not a actual, uh, a science content, you know.
Oh, I see.
So.
So, can you allow, but what is the records check? Well, how does the record check ensure that there's a ten percent blend?
Uh, I guess I'll answer, um, and Leo, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically what the, the records check involves is checking to compare what is alleged to be a, a ten percent blend with the purchasing records for the volume of coffee that constitutes Hawaii or Kona as compared to, uh, other types of coffee that are put into the product. There, it's not an actual measurement of the product itself, but, uh, uh, it, it, it's kind of a backdoor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, checking of the volume of coffee used.
So let me play devil's advocate for a minute, then Deputy Director Maata, then. So if that's the case, and why couldn't you do that with the fifty-one percent? Because what you're saying with the fifty-one percent, it would be an actual, you would need some kind of standard, some kind of measurement to be able to, to attain that fifty-one percent versus a records check?
And I, again, Leo, correct me if I'm wrong, but my guess is the answer to that is you can always do a records check to see what kind of, uh, the movement of volumes of coffee, but you can never ascertain that those volumes are being used in those percentages.
I got it.
In the final product.
Okay, I understand. You know, I, I do also want to echo the comments of Representative Onishi. We have seen this issue, I mean, year after year after year. And I think, you know, again, based on the comments, the Hawaii Restaurant Association, I think those are very, you know, um, these comments should be taken seriously, you know, eliminating the ten percent blends will force our hand to eventually move away to a more affordable, uh, national brand. And that, you know, that kind, that concerns me because now all of a sudden our local farmers are really only going to be selling to the mainland versus being promoted here locally, right? So I think it behooves the Department of Agriculture to really consider doing a market study on this because it really does have far-reaching impact. Should we, you know, force this fifty-one percent? And again, everybody wants to help our farmers, but there's always the unintended consequences, right, that we're always having to deal with. So we, you know, again, I just want to echo the comments of Representative Onishi. I hope that you guys would seriously consider that because this continues to be an issue year after year. Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Members, any additional questions? Okay, if not, um, I have a question for either Leo or Deputy Director Atta. So, uh, and, and, and pardon me, I don't have the same nexus with this issue as, uh, some of the other representatives, so I apologize if this question is ignorant. But, um, in the RIF, um, how many inspectors did you lose?
Leo, could you respond? Cause I, I, I don't have those details.
Uh, so, um, there are several of them. Uh, I think we probably gonna have three, one in Maui, uh, two over here in Honolulu. But one of the, uh, inspectors that are basically, uh, RIF-ed was the labeling enforcement inspector. And it was never filled back since then.
Okay, so one labeling enforcement, as it pertains specifically to this issue, one labeling, um, enforcement, um, inspector is why you are now precluded from, um, doing some of the, uh, labeling records check? Is that inaccurate?
That, that's right. So we're not able to do the actual inspection at the roasting companies anymore because we don't have that inspector anymore. So we just, uh, resort to the, uh, records that they are supposed to have for a period of two years.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Leo. Um, thank you, Deputy Director. Members, any additional questions?
Sure.
Representative Onishi, please.
Yeah, um, this question is for Chris Manfredi. Chris, uh, the Hawaii Coffee Association, um, does that include coffee growers from all islands or all counties?
Uh, yes, Representative, thank you for the question. Uh, we have members on Kauai, Maui, Kona, Ka'ou, Oahu, uh, and not just, uh, farmers, although many farmers. Uh, we also represent processors, uh, retail establishments, coffee shops, um, really runs the gamut in terms of positioning within the supply chain.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative.
You have any further questions, Representative Onishi?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair.
Yep. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing no further questions on HB fifteen seventeen, then we'll move on to our next agenda item. HB sixteen forty relating to recycling, uh, this changes the Electronic Waste and Television Recycling and Recovery Act to the Electronic Device Recycling and Recovery Act establishes, uh, device manufacturer recycling goals and record-keeping and reporting requirements for manufacturers and, uh, collectors. Requires collectors to register with Department of Health as well as expanding recycling and collection requirements of televisions to all electronic devices. Requires the Electronic Device Recycling and Recovery Program to include, among other things, a description of the methods for the convenient collection of electronic devices. On HB sixteen forty, we have the Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson and Vice Chair Kitagawa. My name is Mike Burke, Michael Burke, and I'm with the Department of Health's Office of Solid Waste Management. Uh, we submitted written testimony in favor of this bill, and, uh, we stand on that written testimony that we submitted, and, uh, uh, we'll be here after if you have any other questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Miho Koito with the. Thank you. Next, we have Mihoko Ito with the Consumer Technology Association in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Mihoko Ito. Here on behalf of the Consumer Technology Association, we are respectfully opposed to this measure. And the reason is that while the goal of the measure might be to increase electronics recycling, which is a concept we support, we believe that the bill is really aimed at the wrong target, and the reason for that is because the bill actually increases the collection weight requirements over time for manufacturers. And that really does not take into account the fact that electronic devices are becoming lighter and lighter over time. So looking at the trajectory, and we've put some data into our testimony, manufacturers simply will not be able to meet these targets. We would note that there are other approaches that have been used in states that have modernized their electronics recycling laws, and we'd be happy to share more information and work with the committee on some other proposals. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mihoko. Members, that's all the testimony or testifiers indicating that they'd be present to testify in this measure. Please note, we also have supportive testimony proffered as well from organizations and individuals. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB sixteen forty, who I did not call would like to testify at this time? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB sixteen forty? Representative Onishi.
Yeah, I have a question for the Department of Health.
Yes, sir.
Are you guys aware of other states recycling, electronic recycling laws?
Thank you for that question. I'm going to defer to Wendy Okazaki, who works with us at the Office of Solid Waste Management. She's a recycling coordinator and in charge of the electronic waste program, and so she can answer your question.
Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Okazaki, and like Mike Burke said, I work at the Department of Health with him. Yes, we are aware of other states that do have e-waste recycling laws.
So how closely does this bill shadow or maybe other states' laws?
Every state has their little differences. So for Hawaii, we currently have TV recycling goals, but not for computer manufacturers. And what this bill does would make both computer manufacturers and TV manufacturers have recycling goals, which is very similar to other states have goals for everyone, not just TV manufacturers.
Okay, so how would you respond to the comment made by the previous testifier in regards to the weight requirement? The goals in terms of measuring it by weight?
Okay, so for example, the last year that we collected data for TVs was last calendar year. They all had to tell us how many pounds they collected. And so they collected two point two million pounds of TVs only in last calendar year. So by my calculations, if they had the fifty percent goal, they would have collected, they would be required to collect two point two million pounds as well at fifty percent of sales from twenty nineteen. So fifty percent is definitely doable. They're currently doing it now. We do not have data on computer sales because we don't have any goals for that, and you do have to purchase this data.
Okay, so you're saying that in two thousand nineteen, two million pounds of TVs were sold?
It would be four point four million. And then if we impose the fifty percent goal, say for last year, they would have to collect two point two million pounds, which they achieved last year.
Okay, so how many, how many pounds of TVs were sold in two thousand and twenty?
Two thousand and twenty. I did not have that number right now. We'd have to look at the data. But this bill proposes that the goal, the first year goal, say twenty twenty-three, is based on two years prior. So that's how I was able to calculate that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what the goal is, but the previous testifies condemning that electronic equipment is actually getting lighter. But you're basing it on heavier equipment that was sold previously. And, you know, I mean, that's their problem that you keep increasing the percentage when, in fact, you know, the amount, the total weight may actually be the same or may even be less than the previous year. So, I mean, without knowing that data, how do you end up supporting this? I mean, you know, I mean, if, if two thousand nineteen was four point four million and two thousand twenty was five point five million, right, I mean, then that might make sense. But if it's headed in the opposite direction, then these goals may not be accurate. And we put the burden or the recyclers may not be able to match, to meet this goal. And you don't know if it's actually because of people not recycling them. Or if, you know, it's because of the weight issue.
Well, I think what you have to remember is that the stuff coming in in the current year was actually purchased maybe two years ago, three years ago, four years ago. Think about how long you keep your TV. So it wouldn't be necessarily wise to just base it on the previous year. Maybe the lifespan, we can base it on three years ago, depending what the average lifespan of a TV is or a computer.
Well, and I think this is the same issue that was brought up in the previous bill. That without data and information, how can you set standards not knowing what the trends are? You know, in terms of how are you going to measure this, or how are you going to require the manufacturers to fulfill their requirement? So I know you can't answer that because you're probably not interested in doing a study, but with that, thank you, Chair. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions on HB sixteen forty? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to HB sixteen forty-one relating to recycling. This requires the Department of Health to implement the auditor's recommendations for the deposit beverage container program, including developing a risk-based selection process to select reports submitted by distributors and redemption centers for audit. On HB sixteen forty-one.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson. Sorry.
I haven't called yet, but go ahead, Department of Health.
No, we're excited. We're ready to go. Again. Chair Johansson and Vice Chair Kitagawa. My name is Mike Burke for the Department of Health. We submitted written testimony on HB sixteen forty-one in support, and we stand on that testimony. And, you know, we're here if you have questions after.
Thank you very much, Mike. Members, we only have one other testimony proffered on this measure, but just Department of Health made up for it with their enthusiasm is the only testifier indicating that they would be present on HB sixteen forty-one. So with that, is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB sixteen forty-one? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB sixteen forty-one? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, excuse me, no further questions. Members, let's move on to HB sixteen forty-four relating to environmental protection. This bans the manufacturer, sale, or distribution for sale or use of wraps and liners, plates, food boats, pizza boxes, and firefighting phones that contain fluor- fluor- it's PFAS. It's either PFAS or PFOS. I'll try this per. Never mind. It's too late on a Friday. PFAS is, I think, what it is commonly known in the vernacular, since I can't pronounce the chemical substances. On HB sixteen forty, we have our first testifier, the Hawaii Restaurant Association, offering comments.
Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. The Hawaii Restaurant Association strongly supports the intent of the bill. Just to share with you, in a week and a half time from the time when I first testified on this bill to now, I'm less optimistic that we could accomplish this by the end of twenty twenty-four. All I know is that the industry as a whole is working very hard through our supply chain to find alternate means of packaging. However, just based upon the current supply chain challenges that we face with the COVID nineteen through the pandemic, as you can see on TV all the time, we really feel that this needs to be out in twenty twenty-five and beyond because anything before that, there's no way that the industry will be able to meet. And so we just want to share that information with you. I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody on the committee has.
Thank you very much, Victor. Members, that's the extent of testifiers present who have indicated they wish to testify in HB sixteen forty-four. Is Department of Health, I know you submitted comments, but didn't indicate that you would be testifying, but I just wanted to double check. Does anybody from the Department of Health wish to comment? Okay, doesn't look like it. All right. Anyone else wishing to testify in HB sixteen forty-four? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB sixteen forty-four? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to HB sixteen forty-five relating to the environment. This prohibits lodging establishments providing personal care products and small plastic bottles within sleeping room accommodations, any space within sleeping room accommodations, or bathrooms used by the public or guests. It establishes fines and simple penalties. On HB sixteen forty-five, we have the Department of Health offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson and Vice Chair Kitagawa. This is Michael Burke one last time, representing the Department Health's Office of Solid Waste Management. We submitted testimony commenting on HB sixteen forty-five. We stand on our written testimony and are available to help if there are any questions after. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have John DeFries with the Hawaii Tourism Authority offering comments.
Hello, Chair. HTA has submitted written testimony with comments and recommendations. We stand by that, and we'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. I don't think she is present, but she did indicate she would be here. Lauren Blickley from the Surf Rider Foundation. Not present. Members, that's the extent of testifiers indicating they'd be present to testify on HB sixteen forty-five. Please note that we have other testimony proffered in support, opposition, and comments. On HB sixteen forty-five, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB sixteen forty-five?
Chair.
Representative Onishi, please.
Yeah, Department of Health. I'm curious. What would one full-time person be doing in terms of enforcing this bill?
Thank you for the question. As we see it, we would look at having an inspector or an enforcement person. Primarily, we would be looking at enforcement on a complaint basis because it's likely that they would be located here on Oahu. And so for Oahu lodging establishments, we might be able to conduct some some spot checks here and there, but it would likely be on a complaint basis. And then we would have the position also work on education and outreach, particularly with the regulated community to make sure that there's, you know, the word is out and people know what is going on. That being said, you know, I know that HTA had submitted testimony looking at having, you know, the regulation and the enforcement in-house, and so that's certainly something that we could support and step back from if that were, you know, if that were the case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB sixteen forty-five? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our last agenda item. HB eighteen forty relating to district boundary amendments. This authorizes the appropriate county land use decision-making authority to determine district boundary amendments involving land areas over fifteen acres but less than or equal to fifty acres if the county has adopted an ordinance that meets certain requirements, including the requirement that the district boundary amendment is necessary to produce housing, sixty percent of which shall be reserved for occupants whose incomes do not exceed eighty percent of the area median income. And it prohibits the parcelling of such lands. On HB eighteen forty, we have the Department of Agriculture with comments.
Yes, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Earl. I'm a motor here for the Department of Agriculture, standing on our written testimony with concerns. I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. We also have Mary Alice Evans with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and members. We'll stand on our written testimony, supporting the measure and thanking the previous committee for its amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Alice. We also have Zendo Kern with the County of Hawaii Planning Department in support.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Zendo Kern, Planning Director for Hawaii County. Thank you for the opportunity. We've submitted written testimony. We do stand by that testimony. It goes into detail related to concerns from the State Land Use Commission related to the town case. And we have the Sandy Beach case here. I think that really clarifies the authority. The counties, or at least Hawaii County, has had authorities since nineteen eighty-six to do state land use boundary amendments of fifteen acres or less. This is a very needed tool for us to have, to respond to the housing needs. Our counties desperately need this. I know that you all are very aware that we're in a housing crisis. This is a movement in that direction to give us more tools to do so. I want to point out a couple of things really quickly. There's concerns around it based on the authority of maybe it's going to take some agriculture land or some areas like that. I'd like to point out that our general plan per county charter, it governs our land use policies as well as the CDPs, and it focuses the areas of the growth in the urban cores, rural areas, and agriculture. So any project has to meet with that. A project of a housing project such as like this would work for sixty percent affordable would be in the urban area. So it'd have to meet our general plan. It'd have to meet our CDPs and be consistent with all that, as well as any state laws. So the framework is there. The guardrails are there to keep it consistent with what the intention would be. And we really, really request your support. We desperately, desperately need this. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Zendo. Next, we have Wayne Chantanaka with the Sierra Club of Hawaii in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. Sierra Club does oppose this measure for the reasons described in our written testimony. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, the NICE Commission Chapter Ninety-One process allows for the careful identification and careful deliberation of specific impacts, including impacts to natural and cultural resources, employment opportunities, housing for all income levels, and even agriculture activities that can arise from particular development proposals. And this isn't really replicated in current county processes and isn't reflected in county plans necessarily. So, you know, for those reasons, we respectfully ask that you hold this measure, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wayne. We, I'm not sure if he's here, but do we have the Hawaii Farm Bureau, Brian Miyamoto, in opposition? Thank you very much, Wayne. I'm not sure if he's here, but do we have the Hawaii Farm Bureau, Brian Miyamoto in opposition? We do not. Okay. We have late testimony from the Land Use Commission in opposition.
Thank you, Chair Johansson, members of the committee. Daniel Ardenkirk, the Executive Office for the Land Use Commission. I know it's late. I do have some very serious concerns. Land Use Commission has some very serious concerns about this. Despite testimony from the counties, the counties do not handle what we call public trust doctrine issues. In the manner that I think the Sierra Club, the agricultural community and others would like to see happen. I would like to point out that this bill, despite what's been said, will not help with affordable housing. And I can say that because, not only because I worked for the Land Use Commission for ten years, but also because before I worked for the Land Use Commission. I was a consultant on a number of affordable housing projects, some of which were done by nonprofits who didn't care if they didn't. And this is not the issue. If you look at the problem. In a ten-year entitlement process, the Land Use Commission is three to six months out of that process. So getting the Land Use Commission out of the process won't accomplish much of anything. From a timeline standpoint, it'll only allow projects to be built. Over the objection of community members who may not get a fair hearing at the county level without a contested case hearing. The issues that we have with regard to the law and the town case and the attempted exemption from Chapter ninety one are real. I do not think that this bill can withstand constitutional muster. Or legally be legally supported without putting in a provision that requires the counties to adhere to Chapter ninety one if it were to move forward. Year in, year out, we see measures like this. They don't really identify why. They think that this will result in an increase in affordable housing. The Land Use Commission performs a very important function. We protect the agricultural community. And under the Constitution, we're required to do that under Article eleven. We protect Hawaiian gathering rights. We protect Hawaiian or rather. Cultural resources, water resources, the whole list of things. Removing those protections from the land use process could have severe and negative impacts. We would urge the commission, I mean that the legislature, not to move this matter forward. There are not enough protections in place for the community and for the constituents with regard to this matter.
Thank you very much.
Questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have BIA Hawaii? We do not. Okay, members, please note that on HB eighteen forty. There are additional testimonies in both support and opposition on this measure. Is there anyone else I haven't called wishing to testify in HB eighteen forty? Okay, seeing no further testifiers in HB eighteen forty, members, any questions on this measure? Representative Tarnas.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask a question of Dan Orin Denker. Dan, between the last hearing and this hearing. Hawaii County and Maui County worked with their corporation councils and they put together a white paper to describe. Their justification why the counties would be able to comply with. The requirements under the town case. I was curious if you've read that and if you, what you think of their analysis.
Well, I haven't been privy to that.
I'm sorry, you have not read it?
I have not read it. I will be honest with you. The difficulty that we have with the measure is that it specifically exempts the counties from Chapter ninety one.
I understand. I understand. I understand that that's what your concern is. But I would urge you to read what they put together, because, you know, they've really tried to address the concern that you brought up in the previous hearing. And, you know, I think it has merit, but it would require you to read it and give us your feedback on it. If you haven't had a chance to read it, I understand you can't really comment on it.
Okay, I have not had the opportunity to read it.
Okay, alright, thanks. Sorry. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, and my thanks to everyone for testifying and sticking with us. We will recess for decision-making. Recession.
The recommendation is to pass HB 1516 with amendments including on page one, striking lines 12 through 14 because it may inadvertently conflict with HRS 444 as raised in the subcontractors association testimony. I would also like to strike on page two, lines eight through 12 as unnecessary because it's fairly clear from context according to research agencies as well as inserting a defective date of January 1, 2050. All these changes are made with the concurrence of the economic development chair. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1516 with amendments, chair and vice chair vote. I, Representative Aquino.
I.
Representative Har.
I.
Representative Hashem. Representative Calm. Representative Mizuno.
I.
Representative Morikawa is excused. Representative Onishi. Representative Tarnas.
I.
Representative Matsumoto.
I.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 1960 relating to nonprofit organizations, the recommendation here also again with the concurrence of the ECD chair is to insert a defective date to encourage further discussion of January 1, 2050. So to pass this measure with amendments. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1960 with amendments noting the excuse absence of Representative Morikawa. Are there any reservations? Any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2177 relating to state tax administration. The recommendation here again with the concurrence of the economic development chair is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050. I'd also like to note in the committee report that the committee has concerns about the increases in fines and its effects on small filers as well as those who may have just inadvertently made a mistake because this substantially increases penalties. In addition to require bringing electronic filing. I do note that we do need to create efficiencies and make the tax system more effective at ensuring collection. But but I do have those concerns and I'd like to leave it to the finance committee that it moves to next to determine perhaps what might be the most ideal amounts. So for now, just inserting a defective date but expressing concerns in the committee report about some of the increases in fines. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2177 HD1 with amendments, noting the excuse absence of Representative Morikawa will be noted excuse for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 1619 relating to peer-to-peer car sharing insurance requirements. The recommendation here is to adopt the insurance commissioners amendments as well as inserting various technical and unsubstantive amendments. The bill has already got an effective date and these amendments are made with the concurrence of the transportation chair. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you. Next on HB 1688 relating to the registration of vehicles. The recommendation here is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050 with the concurrence of the transportation chair. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1688 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next, members on HB 1953 relating to concessions. We had some great discussion here. At the request of the transportation chair, I'd like to blank out the number of years to encourage further discussion. It started off as 25 in the original bill and in the HD1, I believe it was changed to 15, but we will blank out that 15 to encourage further discussion on what the ideal timeframe should be for this measure. With that, again, recommendation is to amend the bill. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing no comments or questions, vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1953 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members on HB 1752 relating to housing. The recommendation here is to pass with amendments that are just technical and non-substantive in nature. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? That's not 1752. That's the next. Oh, sorry. No problem. I was gonna say definitely it's in this housing. I'm ahead, sorry. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1752 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next, members on HB 1575 relating to physician assistance. The recommendation here is to pass with amendments including the deletion of the APRN references on page 16, lines 12 through 20. Unfortunately, I think lines 12 through 20 may be out of the scope of this bill based on the bill's title, which is relating to physician assistance. So it's making no value judgment on APRNs, but we've been told that legally the inclusion of that APRN content may just be outside of the title for this bill. So removing the APRNs with the concurrence of the health and human services chair as well as inserting at the end of the bill just because there are parts of chapter 329 that that may expire without some clarifying language. This act shall take effect on a diff- we'll insert a defective date there provided that the amendments made to section 329-328 Hawaii revised statutes by section six of this act shall not be repealed when the section is reenacted on June 30, 2023 pursuant to section six of Act 66 Session Laws of Hawaii 2017. So it's reconciling and harmonizing some of our previous work in this statute that may have been repealed. It's already got a defective date. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1575 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 1594 relating to the Center for Nursing. The recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing no comments or questions, vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1594 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 1667. The recommendation here is to take Walgreens amendment which better effectuates the bill's intent along with the concurrence of the Health and Human Services and Homelessness Chair. And that amendment is on page four, line seven, changing the word "and" to "or." It's already got a defective date. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1667 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next, members on HB 1675, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1675 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members on HB 1746, the recommendation here is to pass this measure also as is unamended. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing non-vice chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1746 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any notes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 1750 1758. The recommendation here is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, vice chair for the vote. Okay, seeing, thank you, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1758 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members on HB 1517 relating to coffee. The recommendation here is to pass with amendments and with the concurrence of the Agriculture Committee Chair. Given the discussion that we had, I think we had some excellent discussion here just about feasibility and workability and implementation issues. I do think that this bill continues to beg a very important discussion that I would like to further. So the amendment I'd like to make again with the concurrence of the agriculture chair is on page eight, Section 3, lines one through seven. Instead of this being an appropriation for the purchasing of equipment to test coffee content or the percentage of coffee beans grown in Hawaii, I'd like to change it to an appropriation for one FTE for inspections based on some of the discussion we had with Leo and the Department of Ag so that there's another person who may be at least able to inspect the records to better realize, I think, the intent of this measure for inspections and authenticity. I do recognize that there are still inherent issues to be explored as it pertains to our Kona coffee industry. Well, I should say our local coffee industry, excuse me. With that, that's the recommendation. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Sure. Representative Onishi.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for those amendments, but I'm still concerned in regards to us not fully knowing or understanding what the market or the overall impact would be to farmers in regards to this amendment and the lack of the department doing some kind of market survey so that we can get better information to help us with the decision. So with that being said, I'm going to be voting with reservations on this bill.
Thank you, Representative Onishi. I think those are very valid concerns. Members, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the amendments. I definitely think that that is one step in addressing this issue. That said, I think I mirror some of the comments that have been made by the previous speaker. And I think, you know, again, the unintended consequences I'm very concerned with. I think the Restaurant Association, you know, I I'm really concerned that if we go in this direction, it could have an effect on the entire industry because now our local restaurants, you know, they'll be, it'll be cost prohibitive for them and they won't be able, so they'll go to national brands that are cheaper and whatnot. And so without again having that information, I'm a bit uncomfortable even with the amendment. So respectfully, I'll be voting with reservations.
Sure. Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1517 HD1 with amendments, noting the reservations of Representatives Har and Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any additional reservations? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 1640 relating to recycling, the recommendation here is to pass this measure with amendments, including a defective date of January 1, 2050 as well as various technical and non-substantive amendments. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation?
Chair.
Representative Onishi.
Yeah, you know, on this bill, I have a similar concern that there's no base data except for one year for us to look at. You know, and I think a great point was brought up in terms of the more compact, the less weight, the lower weight to these appliances, this equipment. So to make this kind of decision for me, it's a difficult one, so I'm going to be voting on reservations again.
Totally understand. Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions? Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have the same concerns. I think that again, when you look at the fact that the computer and television industry is becoming more compact, the appliances or the electronic devices themselves do not have the same amount of weight. And again, without having the baseline from which to determine this, I think, you know, I found some of the testimony in opposition very compelling. So respectfully, Chair, I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or question? Okay, seeing Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1640 HD1 with amendments, noting the reservations of Representative Har and Representative Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any others? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Thanks, members. Next on HB 1641 relating to recycling, the recommendation here is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050 to keep the discussion going. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1641 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, next, members. HB 1644 relating to environmental protection and the banning of PFAS in food packaging items as well as firefighting foams because it's already got a defective date. And I think this is engendering some really good discussion about the nexus of health and PFAS chemicals found in some of these items. I'd like to keep the discussion going and since it's already got a defective date, the recommendation is to pass HB 1644 as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Representative Onishi.
Sorry again, but you know, I was really disappointed on a bill like this. There was no, no one here to testify and ask questions of. So I do have some concerns, so I'll be voting with reservations on this bill.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that the testimony of the Hawaii Tourism Authority was somewhat compelling with respect to the supply chain not having the bottles, et cetera. They needed some time to implement it. So accordingly, I will be voting with reservations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Representative Har. You're you're a little bit ahead of us. That's the next measure. So we'll we'll note your reservations on 1645, but we're on 1644 at the present moment. But we're about to get there.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong bill. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, members, any other comments or questions on HB 1644? Okay, seeing Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1644 HD1 as is, noting the reservations of Representative Onishi. Are there any additional reservation? Representative Kong?
Madam Vice Chair, reservations, please.
Representative Har?
Thank you.
Additional reservation? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members on HB 1645 relating to the environment. I think this is a really great discussion to be having. So the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. There was any comments or questions? Noting your reservations about the supply chain representative, Har. Okay, seeing Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1645 HD1 as is, noting the reservations of Representative Har. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And lastly, members, HB 1840 relating to district boundary amendments. I acknowledge the continuing disagreement between the Land Use Commission as well as the various county entities. But considering we are in need of having continued affordable housing conversations as well as the fact that there's disagreement and dissonance there. I'd like to keep this measure moving so that we can continue to keep this discussion going and hopefully get all parties to a mutually agreeable solution if if legislation is still needed. So the recommendation here is it has a defective date is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions? Oh, oh, sorry, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to note that I have some of the same reservations as the testifiers that shared, and so I'll be voting with reservations on this bill for now.
Sure, thanks. Members, any other comments or questions on HB 1840? Okay, seeing Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1840 HD1 as is, noting my reservations. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any notes? Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, my thank you so much to our testifiers who remained, but also thank you to our members for joining us today. With that, adjourned.